Fifth, two thousand twenty-three to order. First thing on the agenda is a pledge allegiance and I'll ask Commissioner Cox to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So.
You guys are good with all that?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion if it's all right with our chairman that we accept the agenda as it's written right now.
Okay. The two, the two first items will be phone calls.
Can I have a second, the motion?
Okay, moving second that we set the agenda for today, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, Sean Walker, Winding Waters, get him on the phone.
This is Sean.
Hi Sean, this is Chantel with the county clerk's office. We're in, I'm good. We're in the commissioner meeting, are you ready?
I am.
Hello Sean?
Hi, how are you?
Good. Why don't you explain a little bit about your, what you're starting here for this, for your new business?
Okay, um, sorry, at a window. Uh, so I've actually had the business for several years in Garden City, but we previously lived in the city limits. And so now that I live in Sweetwater, it's basically a home-based business and so I needed to get the county license instead of the city license.
Okay.
It's just a landscape business, sprinkler systems, maintaining, mowing, putting in sod, what have you. So, nothing, nothing real major adding to a house or anything like that, it's just your basic landscape needs.
Okay. So do you have, do you have a lot of storage of equipment or anything there, or?
No, so, I, any equipment that I use, I rent as far as skid steers or anything like that, so I'm not storing anything at my place. So, I do have the four and a half acres behind Pickleville that I have as far as if I use anything for a lay down yard, so it's not at my personal house itself.
I see. I see you got, is the one employee, is that you, or do you have one beside you?
No, it's just, it's me.
Okay.
My wife will go help me once in a while, but it's basically just me.
But she's probably the boss, so you won't count her.
Yeah, she. Yeah, it's a pretty, pretty simple deal.
So Sean, would you, do you have liability insurance?
So I do, I was actually just on the phone when you guys called, I'm trying to get proof of that. It's through Curry Insurance out of Willow.
Okay.
And so I can obviously forward to you guys what I need to have proof of that.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could forward that proof to our office, that'd be great.
Okay.
Alrighty, you have any other questions?
Sorry, I, I meant to be there in person, but my mother's having some issues and so I actually had to come out to Willow.
Oh yeah.
I was there and answered any questions you guys had today.
You bet, no problem.
I've had things, you know?
It does. I'd make a motion that we approve the business license for, um, was it Winding Waters Landscape, Winding?
Winding Waters.
Water, Winding Waters Landscape. And then if you would just give us a copy of your liability insurance, so that can go with your, with your application, Sean. So I'd make that motion.
Second. Okay, moving second that we approve the business license request for Winding Waters Landscape, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So bring it, just bring a copy of that in and come into the clerk's office and pay for your license Sean and we'll, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck with your mother.
Yeah, good luck with your mom.
Appreciate that.
We'll see ya.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Next is Travis Norman, game changer, chaser, changer.
Hi Travis, this is Chantel with the clerk's office, I'm here in the commissioner meeting, are you ready for us?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Hey Travis, how are you today?
Oh, fabulous, and you?
Good, good. Yeah, we're just looking over your business license request here.
Yes.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
Uh, so, this request, what did, I'll be guiding big game hunts on private property. The gentleman I'll be working for, he requires a business license. He carries the insurance for, um, all clients that come to the ranch. The only insurance I do have to carry of course is, uh, you know, basically vehicle insurance. And then he also carries vehicle insurance while I'm on the ranch for, uh, the vehicle that I bring to the ranch.
Okay.
I'll be working under his guiding license. But yeah, it's on private property only.
Okay. And it looks like you have one employee, that must, that's you I suppose?
Yeah, that's just me and it's, um, basically August till end of October, you know, or the bow hunt into, uh, the end of October. So, a couple months out of the year.
Okay. I see the insurance there in the packet. Do you have any questions for him?
So, um, would it be hard to just get some type of documentation from your employer on your, just about your liability coverage? Just so that that could go with your application? I, I didn't, I didn't see a certificate, but maybe it's here.
Yeah, it does have the verbiage in there where R and K does provide that insurance for the folks that's on that. Would like the Orpens comp claim, I'll do a waiver on that.
Well, yeah, just a certificate of who's insuring, sharing you to make sure that there's liability insurance for, you know, whether you or, I, I, we don't care who provides the insurance or who carries the policy. We just needed to go to your application to show that you do, you are covered with liability insurance.
If I can get that information sent over to you.
Okay. With that, I would make a motion that we approve the business license for Game Chaser LLC.
Second that.
Okay, moving second that we approve business license for Game Chaser LLC, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, greatly appreciated, thank you so much.
Thank you Travis.
Thanks.
All right, enjoy.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
All right, Commissioner Lee.
Okay, so we're organizing the new weed board. I've been speaking with quite a few people, I'm still waiting on a commitment from, from someone out of Woodruff. He, he, he did talk to me, but he was gonna call me back, so I don't have him at the moment, but I wanted to present, Bess Huffner and Jordan McKee to be on our new weed, well, our updated weeds control board. And then we'll find a few more people for next month's meeting. And I've spoken about those guys. And they represent two different communities and Bess especially is very involved with the weeds over there and picking and keeping them under control. And Jordan's happy to serve in Lake Town.
Is there anybody from the, any of the board members from the previous week?
Yeah, so TJ mentioned, uh, cause TJ helped me gather some of these names, he mentioned, let me pull it up here. There's only one. Craig Kennedy. Mentioned that he's willing to stay on. So, between him and.
Okay, so have you contacted him?
I haven't talked to Craig yet, that was just me talking to TJ this morning, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll just have to call Craig.
You mentioned one other name, um, I just wondered if that'd been confirmed or not.
Oh yeah, no, no, he, he did volunteer, but I haven't, I didn't get a chance to reach out to him, I tried calling him this morning, but he's up in the mountain. And I wanted to get a solid yes straight from him.
But secondhandly, he said he would.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, with that then, I would make a motion that we appoint Bess Huffner and Jordan McKee, um, to the county weed board.
Second that.
Okay, got a motion that we appoint Jordan McKee and Bess Huffner to the county weed board, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And then if you'll, get the other two, we'll do them next.
Yeah, do we need five total, or do one of us serve on it?
One of, four, four with you and, and the commissioner as a voting member, so.
Yeah, I'll talk to Craig and someone else.
Okay. Sounds good. Melanie. Come up and state your name and.
Okay, I'm Melanie Lim and I'm, I have a few things to talk about. One is my job as deputy clerk and one is my job as court clerk. So, um, we've been trying to organize some surplus, uh, items. I have some co, some copies of, these are just photos that I just took of vehicles that are out, are out here in the parking lot. Right now, I only have four titles. And I haven't, I haven't matched the VIN to which vehicles go to what yet. But I only have four titles for vehicles that the county owns. That Kaia, the recorder, so her job is to keep track of the vehicles and things like that. So I only have four, there's a lot more than four vehicles out there. So I'm not really sure how to.
Wonder if Dale has the sheriff ones.
Well, and I also, that's what I was a little bit confused about, if, if it does have a sheriff emblem on it, is that the sheriff's vehicle, or is that a county bought vehicle?
It's a county bought vehicle.
Okay.
It's bought by the county.
Okay. So I can, I can double check on those, but if, if you guys have any clarifying, like.
Would Dale have the titles?
No.
We should have them?
No, he, he wouldn't have them, they would be in the court's office because, yeah. So we'll have to sort of see. They, and they, and they won't have Rich County Sheriff on them, they will have just Rich County, um.
Like on the titles, that what you mean? Oh, okay. I just meant like the stickers on the outside, if they said sheriff or whatever. So I can, and I can go match which Vins, but I didn't know if you guys, if you guys have specific vehicles that you would like to surplus, if you're looking to surplus all of those vehicles. I also have no idea, um, what, like, we don't have keys for any of these vehicles. And I just went out, um, like on Monday and looked in all the, by the gas ta, you know, by the gas tanks in, in compartments. None are in there, as far as I can tell, and I'm not sure where they'd be.
Okay, so, um, do we not have a file with titles in them?
Not that I can, not that I know of, I can call Becky and.
There's a, there's a file with titles. I'm not sure where that's filed, but there is a file with titles, so we can, then we can start matching the titles with the Vins on the vehicles.
Okay.
There's just some questions we need to have. We need to talk to extension and then we need to talk to the sheriff on see which one of these vehicles he wants to retain.
Okay.
There's, yeah, and just kind of go through and say this stays, this doesn't at this point in time. It probably, in the past, we've tried to retain, um, one of his vehicles for them to go back and forth to post with.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's, and then, I'm not sure where we're at with an extra vehicle in case we have a major issue with one. We always try to keep an extra for the sheriff, that's basically one that they could just get right out of their old vehicle and then do a new vehicle until,
Okay.
if it's broke down, if it's wrecked, those kind of things. So, I'm not sure what we have in Garden City. I know we have another vehicle over there, but I believe it's being used by Sovereign Lands, so.
Okay.
You didn't know we had a second stash?
I didn't know. Didn't know there was secret compartments everywhere.
Two vehicles over there, Sovereign Lands is using one and, and, um, actually two.
Okay.
And then they brought, when, when they got the another, when John got his new vehicle, that's when they put John's vehicle in Garden City and that's why this explorer come home.
Okay.
And that's why.
For the sheriff?
Yeah, and the, the keys to the two sheriffs would be down in the sheriff's department. So, um, we've got some keys somewhere.
And we, we'll need to do a walk or walkabout, cause.
Okay.
Make sure the mosquito people.
Right.
If we need them for anything, we'll just keep them, but.
Okay. That's fine.
And then there's quite a bit of stuff down in the basement.
Yes.
And as far as this computer stuff, um.
So I verified with IT, all of those that are downstairs have been cleaned of everything. And they, they are fine to either be destroyed. Or I actually, the, the computers and the monitors that you can see on the desk down there, I actually thought about asking, I know Frank Smith has started at the middle school, he started like a STEM club thing and he's got some grant money with that. And I wondered about asking him if he would like to use those, if we could donate them to the school, if they're just gonna be trashed.
I'm sure that they would probably, I mean, if there's, if there's a use for them, absolutely.
You, you guys would be okay with that?
Yeah. Check with him and see. If not, then, um, Brian has had an outlet with some place in Evans, then he would go and turn our stuff in, so.
Okay. Okay, I'll check with the school then. But I also just don't know, I mean, there's like filing cabinets and, um, and things like that, most everything down there, everyone here in these offices knows that they're down there. They don't need them. They just are taking up a lot of space. I don't know that they're gonna be hot items on the surplus. I don't think they're gonna, you know, somebody's not gonna wanna drive from Salt Lake to come get a ten dollar filing cabinet. But, at least we can put it out there and see.
Yeah.
If you guys are good with that.
Yeah, we also have a couple, three vehicles up at the road shed that we'll need to list for surplus as well.
Okay, I'll, would they have the titles for those?
No, Becky, Becky, the clerk's office would hold all the titles.
So then why, where did that change for like some of them not to be?
No, I don't know.
Obviously, I'm, I'm like new to all this, so I don't really know.
They all should be there.
Don't know.
Cause they all need to be in one spot.
They're in three different stashes as well.
No. Okay, well I'll make sure they all get put in one stash, one place.
So, when we, when we find out where those are, there's probably gonna be around sixty titles in a, in a folder somewhere. Cause you're gonna have a title for every trailer that the road department has. And then seven or nine garbage trucks that we have. And these pickups, this is just a tip in the iceberg because you've got, um, I think, I think just the road department has seven or eight trailers. Weed department and the two trailers that they have, and then the three trucks that have mosquito foggers in them besides the one sitting out here. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, there is a file somewhere with several titles.
Okay. I will check, we'll just continue this till next month.
Yeah, we're, it, it's gone on, you know, we're, we're not on, we, it's gonna take a little while to work through this to get us ready. And then we just need to get them out to where people can view them, um, and see what kind of condition they're gonna be in. This one, I know this one, um, that the regional commission has, um, I'm guessing has, uh, some pretty severe mice damage inside of it. Cause I know that when they brought it over, there was mice in it, as well as the pickup that has the fogger in it. You know, there was four great big bags of, um, sunflower seeds that was left in the truck and, um, there.
For inv, invitations.
Apparently, yeah.
Okay.
It, uh, they ate all the insulation out from underneath the hood and.
Okay.
It's, anyway, we got some titles, so we've got some.
I'll keep working on that. I'll figure that out. Okay, the other thing was, this is the, you guys should have a copy of this, but if you want to look at this one, it's the, my local radio, she came and presented, um, to me their new options, they've, and apparently this is something new that has never, I don't know what's happened before, but this is like where, you know, the commercial for all the sporting events. And they've changed all their prices now and they're also adding in, um, rodeo, high school rodeo coverage. So they're either doing it by radio or by video. And these are kind of their options for, you know, your little commercial. And I, I was just told that I needed to present it to you guys and you guys can decide.
What have we done in the past?
Nothing. Can we do a commission meeting, will they do our commission meeting?
Sure, I don't know.
Yeah, actually, I, I thought you meant like as an ad, I thought you were making a joke. That sounds, you'd be very effective. You mean will they stream it?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
You know, what's wrong with this stream?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
Just wondering if they.
You just want local, you want more local involvement?
Can we buy a thirty second ad, as part of our commission stream? We just take a clip?
Sure.
I think if we're gonna do this, I don't know, maybe not, I was gonna say maybe we ought to do it personally, but maybe not.
Personally not.
Pay for it. Well, yeah, it would kind of be the Rich County Commission, it would have to be Rich County.
Yeah.
Support, it's like maybe during like the basketball games.
Yeah, yeah, it would just be the Rich County, you know, commissioners support, local athletes.
We could say Rich County Commissioners, we just have to say Rich County supports.
For the town, we do the town board and town board members and then they name.
You're breaking the law.
Perfect.
Perfect.
It's good to know. But anyways, so I don't, I don't know what, what you guys wanna do, if you don't wanna do anything, I just need your answer, that's all. If you have any questions, I was just here to answer the questions about.
Um, we may need to run this past our attorney to see if there's a, where local government has, there's some pretty, there's some pretty, uh, strict guidelines about what local government can do. I don't know that this is anything to do with, but let's just let us run by them.
Okay.
How quick have we gotta?
I don't, I.
The longer you wait, the more it's sold out.
No, she didn't really give a date and I, I just think you'd want it before the sports start, but even then if it was in the middle of the season, I think they'd just throw you in.
It's a cool service, I think if the county can support it, you know, we'd want to, just have to ask.
Let's just run it by our, our attorney and make sure that we're, you know, there's no issues with that.
Perfect. If it is, do you have a decision on what you'd wanna do, like, do you want this on like another agenda to decide? If he gives you the go ahead to decide which one?
Let's, he'll be here today, we'll just run by him then and maybe we can put it on the August agenda.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, my last thing is this, this is a new, um, you should have copies of these too in your packets, but, um, for justice court, I don't know how it's worked in the past with instant payments. The county uses instant payments on our website for lots of things, business licenses, marriage licenses. So I don't know if you guys, I, I didn't look into that, but we also use instant payments for justice court payments. And what's a little bit complicated about that is, let's say Commissioner Lee gets a ticket and he wants to pay his ticket. When I take the payment on instant payments, it takes at least six days for that payment to go through. I'd say between me putting it in, or, you know, if they call, if people are calling in, or if they do it online themselves on our website, it takes about six days for it to be put in. And then after that, after it's, after it's gone through the process of instant payments, then I, or, um, Christie Thornock is the other court clerk, then we have to put it into the court system. So it's, it's making a lot of extra work for us.
Like you have to record the payment in the court system after it settles?
Because instant payments doesn't talk to, um, doesn't talk to the court system right now. So instant payments does have an option, does have an option where they can talk directly to the court system, but it still takes five days for it to process. Um, Heartland is what the district court uses and it's instant. It would be instantly, someone would be either denied or accept, their card would be denied or accepted and it talks right to the court system. So, we already use the Heartland for district court, but we haven't used it for justice court. And so I just have the, and, and I'm a little bit confused as to the procedure with justice court. There's not a lot of support in the justice court for, like for justice court clerks here in our county. And I don't know if it's like that everywhere else, but when I started with district court, I immediately had like lots of support from Cache County. I had somebody training me, I had somebody available to talk to all the time. In justice court, that's not the case. It's not, it's like days before I get a reply on something and somebody helping me, um, with questions and things like that, so. The Heartland people, the salesperson, um, Carol French, she told me that the judge should be the one signing this account, this contract. When I spoke with Annalisa, she said, even though it's the, the judge signing it, you guys would still need to be the ones approving it. So, I just need to know if you've approved it, or if you guys know a different process, if you guys are the ones that are supposed to be signing it. I'm just not sure, and I've gotten zero answers from anyone else. And when I asked Carol about other justice courts, she said the judge is the ones that, that are, that are always signing. But I will say there's not a lot, there, I mean, there's a few in Utah that are county, most justice courts are city specific. So there's, there's a few like Daggett County is, is county, you know, justice court, but I just, so I just need your approval on if that's okay to move forward with that system. There, there are like in here, you can, in the contract, you can see like the fees that they charge, it's, it's all very similar to instant payments and like, and then like the district court, we just pay like a small, a small fee for them to process the payments for us.
And so what did Judge Cook say about?
Um, I haven't spoken with him, he does have it, like I had emailed him last week and, um, I, I'm assuming that he's just, we have justice court tomorrow. I'm assuming he's just waiting to tell me tomorrow in person.
Okay. Yeah, cause I know, yeah, I know that, I know that, I know the judge is on, on district court.
Right. And, and this is like the contract, this is, so Heartland has, has a general contract with the state of Utah courts. So we would just go under their umbrella, it's not like an individual contract. And, and then, so the Utah State Courts has agreed. And, and then, so the Utah State Courts has agreed to these certain terms with Heartland, um. And they're working on updating their software and things like that to better serve the Utah courts to make it even more simple for. Defend defendants and, and people to pay and, cause right now they don't have like an E-check option or an ACH option. It's just taking a credit card or a debit card, so they're working on updating that in their system to be able to do that and I, I, I just think it's a great. I, I love it in district court, it makes my job a lot simpler and as you know, around here, justice court is really busy, especially in the summer. And I'm having to put in a lot of extra hours to do that.
Well, I'd support you in doing that as long as the judge signs up on it.
Okay.
Looks like the judge has got to sign, huh?
Yeah, so this is just a copy, like I just, I just sent him, this is just our copy that she made for us and, yeah, he hasn't signed anything or done anything yet.
But it has Carol's signature on it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so she, she filled everything out for me, she said, now you just have to get the judge's signature.
Okay.
I just told her what we, what, what we'd need and what we'd want. And she just basically mirrored other counties and then mirrored district court.
I'm guessing that if you just talk to Trevor about it, that, or Judge Cook about it, that he will just sign it and you can move on just like we did with, with the, uh, district.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I'm, you know, if we need to make a motion, I would make the motion that we approve you to go ahead and negotiate with Judge Cook on getting that contract signed.
Second.
Okay, so we got the motion that, and a second, then you go ahead and get the judge's signature and move ahead with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Perfect, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Attorney Willoughby.
A little bit ahead of schedule.
Twenty minutes ahead.
You here for, uh?
I'm interested in the noise abatement.
Oh, okay.
Discussion, I'm interested in the RV discussion.
I mean, that wasn't be like, why are you here, it was like.
No, that's okay.
What are you looking for? So, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so.
Oh, okay, good.
We shouldn't be so darn deficient.
You are very efficient.
Okay, so, um. As far as, did we, did we get a copy of GovOS's contract?
I sent, emailed it to.
Melanie.
Forwarded it to her, yeah, she was gonna copy it and put it in the file.
Okay.
But we oughta have her, let's have her bring it in and these guys can look at it before we. Sign off on it.
Um, Kim would be, she's got quite a few personal property tax exemptions that might be good if we had her come in and give them to us, we can work on them. Also, um, as far as the minutes go, um. We. I looked through them, I didn't see any issues, but, um.
For June?
Yeah. But we still have May's and we still have April's to approve. And I didn't see them.
Me either.
So, let's do June.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the June seventh minutes as written.
Second.
Move in second that we have approved the minutes for June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, get Kim.
Oh geez, did we pay for Granicus?
They were exposed to.
I see, I see fourteen thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars for Granicus last June, June twenty-third. We never signed a contract though. Hey, Kim.
Kim Wilson, Rich County Assessor, I just have personal property tax exemptions, got this many, do you want me to just leave them and you guys can look through them?
If you don't mind.
That was kind of the plan, I figured you'd have a, actually, that's quite a small stack.
Quite a small stack, well, we should be wound down by now, but we still have, we're trickling through, so.
Well, luck enough, there's any, we have any questions, we'll set them aside.
Perfect, and then you'll let me know for, come down and.
Yep.
It'll probably be after lunch.
That's fine.
We just thought we got a minute and we'll just start working through them.
Okay, do you have anything else for me?
I'll think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
You bet, thank you.
I think go to fifteen thousand of these. Uh, twenty-seven thousand. I think it was fifteen thousand when I started though.
Yeah. You liked the these?
Yeah.
How are you, Lanny?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. See, you got some mild alpha knocked down out there.
Yeah.
This side of Woodruff.
Yeah.
Trying to tempt the sky to rain on you, aren't you?
I'm trying to make it rain.
It doesn't take much, just having to cut something.
Yeah, I cut a bunch over in Lake Town and.
Yeah.
Thursday, Friday, we got some rain over there.
A little bit, doesn't.
I'll take the rain on, that hay tastes the same to me next winter if it's rained on or not, so.
In this area, we need the rain.
Yeah. Start the second crop back, it, it's good for it. To see that now, yeah, that's.
You guys survive the fourth over there?
Yeah. I was talking to some of the food businesses and they said the third was twice as busy as yesterday.
Oh, right.
It's the fourth for some reason.
Oh, is it my dad gone back or something?
Some must've went home, maybe, I don't know if the weather had anything to do with it or not, but.
A lot of people went home yesterday morning.
Just too rainy?
I, I think a lot of them had work today, you know.
Wanna beat the traffic calm.
You got, you got a few weekends, a lot of people were stopped here, I'm getting rid of them.
Yeah. I went to the bakery yesterday and it's packed, I couldn't get in and I didn't recognize anybody.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah.
It's just amazing how much traffic goes up and down each year.
Yeah.
Twenty-third, so it's probably.
No, that was just, that was just when this was ran out, I don't know if it was actually paid, but. But, uh, it's already been paid.
Yeah, I care, I'm by.
And within, in the contract, the contract was supposed to be signed and renewed back in the, at the bakery.
Probably can give it back.
Yeah, and I'm gonna give it back.
We don't have a contract, we shouldn't even take it.
And not here yet.
Gonna look through this?
I guess that was, Granicus was emailed to you, John, right?
Granicus?
Yeah.
The, the, I just saw it on there.
The approval.
I signed it, like, uh, the Adobe one?
I don't know if.
I'll have to look.
She just said it went to you.
I don't remember signing Granicus. I tried to look at him.
I didn't sign any of the Adobe because I couldn't, I'm not sure what that was for.
I'm, I mean, I, I may have, but I'm, I don't think I did.
Well, I'm coming, I'm coming, I was, we're gonna back down.
Yeah, I haven't signed it yet.
Okay, it's paid.
Yeah, I've approved it. Thank goodness, oh. And nothing else, not my fault.
Oh, that's funny. You didn't care long enough to know, you're signed.
Well, I would've cared if it was on my.
Come on up.
Does it look like we're all waiting for you?
Are you?
You're just on, just in time.
Great, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Sam.
It's good to see you.
John.
Good.
How are you, Bill?
It's always a pleasure.
Annalisa, how are you?
I'm Chantel.
Chantel.
You're Chantel, I'm so sorry.
This is Chantel. Annalisa's on a cruise somewhere.
Okay.
Well, back to the family reunion.
You're the new. How you doing?
This has been Willoughby, he's our attorney. Some days.
And he does know what's going on most of the time.
No, just never.
So, we got a little ahead of schedule, so we'll just let you go ahead and.
Okay, ready for the eleven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so this is the, um, public hearing, uh, continuation. The commission has been looking at, um, enacting an ordinance that would declare a general policy for allowing livestock to graze. Uh, freely and then defining liability for any trespasses or damages on the private land. So, let me pull that out.
Do we need to go, make a motion to go into public hearing?
Is that a question for me?
Well, are these other guys?
Um, I don't know, so.
It's noticed up as a public hearing.
Okay, then, yeah, we probably need to. Unless you have more introduction you wanna do before we go into a public.
Maybe we could, however you'd like it, we can, uh, have me go first and then take comments if any, or you can do comments and then I can follow up.
Yeah, okay.
Have me go first, okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, so, last time, uh, this is a continuation. I was sent one question that came up and the, the commission was looking for an answer on, uh, and the question was. If a breeding bull, uh, trespasses onto private land and inseminates a cow, is that considered a trespass? Would there be damages for that? Does that ring a bell? Okay. Um. So. The short answer. Uh, comes from, uh, general trespass law. Uh, trespass, when you're talking about damages that are being owed, is a tort, which means it's a civil action where one's person sues another person. Uh, trespass, when you're talking about damages that are being owed, is a tort, which means it's a civil action where one person sues another person. More common toward, go ahead.
Let me interrupt it. Can you turn your chair and kinda speak toward to the, to them also? With that.
It's a little hard to hear today. Is anybody here for this?
We don't, I don't know how to like that.
Folks are, okay.
They'll never come back. Yeah.
I'm gonna cut you out here, I'm sorry.
With our construction, it's hard to hear, so.
Yeah, okay. So, let me back up, um, and just start maybe from the beginning.
Okay.
Okay, so Utah is a, uh, is a, uh, open range state, which means that you have, if you have livestock and you turn them out onto, onto public or open lands, uh, they're not considered strays as long as they're branded or marked in some way. Um. The state of Utah has passed a statute where, so the question is, um, what happens? Whose responsibility is it to keep those cows from drifting onto private land? So picture you have a huge tract of, um, say BLM land and cows are roaming everywhere. And right in the heart of it, someone builds a subdivision or a cabin or something. The question is, whose responsibility is it to, um, if the private owner does not want livestock grazing on their private land, whose responsibility is it to prevent that? You have two options. Option one is, the, uh, livestock owner's responsibility is to keep, to control their livestock from getting onto private land. That, um, framework is called, uh, fence in. And it imposes the duty on the livestock owner to keep their livestock from drifting onto private land, fence in. The other option is called fence out, and this would be where, uh, the obligation is on the land, the private land owner, if they don't want the open range livestock on their personal piece of property, that they would need to put up fencing to keep that out and call that fence out. And the state of Utah, uh, by statute, has, um, stated that county commissions decide, um, by ordinance, and that if they don't act, then the, uh, default is fence in, is fence in. And it also allows counties to divide up areas, doesn't have to be county wide, you can make one decision, one place and one for another. And so, uh, for, since, in my review of, of county ordinances since nineteen ninety-one, uh, Rich County has not had an active ordinance in place, meaning that for all those years, we have been fence in. Um. And so, um, and here we're talking about damages that happen, so if livestock drift onto a private piece of land and causes damages, tear up a garden, eat a fruit tree, um, uh, then the potentially the livestock owner would be liable. Um, so the question from last month that was raised and, and continued for answer is, uh, what about if a breeding bull, uh, goes on private land and inseminates a cow, would that be considered, um, trespass? Which would have damages. And so here, uh, the leading case on this is Limbaugh versus Gibson. It's a two thousand twenty, uh, Utah case that's still good law. And it defines the tort of trespass. It says, a person is liable for trespass when without permission, um, he or his possessions intentionally enter the land of another, um, and cause damages. Um. Here, uh, it defines damages that you always get at least nominal damages. So if you trespass, maybe if I trespassed on your farm, I didn't cause any damages, you would have right to sue me for nominal damages of one dollar. Just the principle of the thing. But you also get compensatory damages, um, if I actually caused harm. Compensatory damages are the difference in value between the property before my trespass and then the value of my, the real property after the trespass. So again, if I walked through your cornfield and your corn would have a value of X, and if I trampled quite a bit of corn, and now the value is X minus the corn I trampled, I'm liable for the difference. And, um, so, uh, it's always a dollar, so if, if, if a cow, if a breeding bull went in and inseminated a cow without the, um, permission of the landowner, I think it's fair to say that there would always be a dollar damage. Plus, if the landowner could prove that the value of the cow unimpregnated was more than the value of the cow now that this bull inseminated it, then the livestock owner would be liable for the difference in the value of the cow. And I, I guess that would be a fact specific scenario. And so the answer to that question is yes, and then the amount varies. Do you have any questions about, does that make sense? Okay, so the, where Rich County is, um, such a rural county with so much land, um, the idea is to pass an ordinance turning from any area outside of incorporated towns, having that switch the way it was pre-ninety-one, uh, back to fence out. And if you, then if you go to fence out, um, then the commission has to define what is considered a lawful fence. And a lawful fence is that minimum fence that a private landowner has to erect if they want to be able to claim damages. So if you want the cows off of your back garden, you have to at least put up what the commission is defined as a lawful fence. Um, or else you are, you have a bar to seeking damages against the livestock owner. And so, uh, we talked last month about what features a, a lawful fence would have. And then one last, um, detail is that the, uh, state law says that none of this applies if you are near a historic livestock trail. So where, you know, for a generation or so, cows have, or livestock have been, um, being moved, um, so it's considered a historic livestock trail, no matter what the commission does, uh, those are always considered fence out. So if you buy private land adjacent to a historic livestock trail, uh, no matter what the commission does, it's always fence out for you. Okay, do you have any questions about any of that or things I can clarify more?
Okay, I think that's, I think you addressed what we were talking about.
And then we did put some guidelines on the fence, fences, 'cause a lot of people are using these aluminum fences and fancy little, and a cow will walk through them and then we're livestock owners in trouble 'cause they went through this little flimsy aluminum fence, so we kinda, we put some guidelines on the fence that they have to build.
And I have incorporated all of those changes to the fencing that we discussed at the last meeting.
Now we'll probably get to the public hearing.
Got a motion to open a public hearing?
Did Bill make a motion?
So moved.
Did you, did you make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, second.
Okay, move, sec, that we go to public hearing on this matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any comments from the public about this?
Lanny, what was your question last time? I, I'm trying to remember.
Uh, about breeding livestock.
Yeah, okay.
And does that change any if it's a fence in or fence out?
Can I answer that?
Well.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So, I assume we're talking about the one person has livestock on their private land and another person is using overgrazing, is that right?
No, he's talking about his neighbor. His neighbors, if the fence, if the, if there's a fence between him and his neighbor and his neighbor's cows get over on his side of the property, what, what recourse do they have if the neighbor isn't willing to help maintain the fence? Is that, is that kinda what we're talking about?
Um. So are you, are you inside the towns or outside the towns?
Yeah.
Outside the towns?
Yeah, and you know.
And so, um, maybe you can be, maybe help me with some specifics. You have a piece of land and a neighbor?
I have a piece of land and I can't keep the neighbor's cows out.
And he fixes his half of the fence and the neighbor doesn't fix his half.
So, this might be a question that, uh, would be answered more from our next, our agenda item that is at eleven fifteen, which is, um, agricultural fences.
Pertaining to the construction and maintenance of fences, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so this wouldn't really apply to you, what we're doing now, because what you have is, um, uh. I mean, this, this pertains more to, um. Let me just finish thinking that through. Maybe it would, maybe this is the way it would pertain to you. Uh, right now, under the way that Rich County law is, if you don't want those cows entering your property, then you, the burden is on you. No, that's not right.
But, but the fence is already there.
There's already a fence.
There's already a fence.
So is your question, who has to maintain or pay for that fence?
Yeah, whose duty is it to control the cows? And also, on a, a road right away, if this is inappropriate for now, what's the rule on, like, county roads and?
Okay, so the first question is with your land, right now, the way that, if you're living outside, if you're living outside the towns, and I'm assuming you're not next to a historic livestock trail. Okay, then right now, the, your neighbor has the duty to keep their livestock in, just right now a fence in. And then, if those livestock drifted onto your land and caused damages, you would have a private cause of action that you could sue for the damages. And that damages would either be a dollar nominal or the actual dam, diminution of value to your property because the cows were there. So right now, we would say that the burden is on you. No, the burden is on the, your neighbor to keep their cows here. Does that make sense? With this new ordinance, if you're outside the towns, then the burden would be on the private landowner to fence the cattle out. And then our next eleven fifteen is about how those fences work. And then for roads, um, any road going through open range, um, the, the li- livestock owner is not responsible if there's a car collision. It's, it's, it's just a, it's just a negligence issue, so if, in fact, if the driver negligently hits the cow, the driver may be liable to the livestock owner. Um, so in open range situation, the, the rancher is not negligent for allowing livestock to run. Because the road is going through open range.
All of Rich County is open range now, now.
So, so what he's referring to is, we've got a county road, there's fences on both sides of the county road, and yet one landowner maintains the fence on one side, but the other landowner does not, and so the cows are continually out in the county right away.
So that would be, um. So you have, you have the, you have a fence on both sides?
Fence on both sides.
And one neighbor's allowing their cows to.
To graze the county road.
Kind of trick the fence and grounds?
And then, in, in, most cases, the fence, the road actually divides ownership as well. Most, most places, there is not the same owner on both sides of the county road.
Okay.
And in those cases that there is, there's a ca, there's a guard rail and the, and the landowner can graze on both sides of the road. But if the county road is actually the property lying basically, then both sides of the fence are both sides of the right away are fence. Some landowners are not recognizing the fact that their fence needs to be maintained on the county right away and that they can graze the county right away.
Yeah. So, um. The, here I think the question would be, what is the definition of, uh, open range? And, uh, open range is all land in the state that's not privately owned, um, minus, uh, roads that the statute says, um, and I didn't bring the statute with me. Um, but it says something like, if the road has curbs or fencing on both sides, that then the roadway would not be considered open range. And so basically, um, if you're driving on a road and there's a side or two sides that don't have fencing or curbing, then you would, as a driver, not be aware that livestock could be on there. Um, did I say that wrong?
No, no, I just corrected.
Okay. Right, so if you're driving on a road and it has fences on both sides or curbing on both sides, then the roadway is not considered open range, and then there is a duty to, to keep them off, like, um. Uh, but if a road lacks a fence or a curb on one side or both sides, then the road is open range and then the duty is on the driver to be aware that there could be cows here. So if you have a road that goes through open range and if it has fences on both sides, then, and I'm assuming this is because drivers would then rely on those fences, then the roadway is, is not considered. It's a thread of non-open range through otherwise open range. So you don't have to have a fence to keep them off the ca, the road, but if you do have a fence, then drivers rely on the fence and the road is not considered open range. So we have had issues where, uh, ranchers will bring their cows to graze probably temporarily on roadways inside the fences, which is very dangerous because you are grazing them in land that is not open range. And then, uh, you know, if there is a collision or some damages that occur there, um, the rancher would not have the protection that his cows were on open range. So the rancher could be very liable in a cow car collision on a roadway where there is fencing on both sides.
Does that include guardrails? I mean, is that considered fencing?
I didn't, uh, plan to talk about this today, I didn't bring the statute with me. Um, which is my mistake, never to come to Rich County without my packet on open range, but, um, I don't think that, my memory is that it is, um, is mostly curbing and fencings. Things where you should be able to, you know, curbing is you're probably in town and fencings, um.
But there's, there's.
Would rely on those.
There's a question mark in all that too, is with these public lands, livestock owners can't be responsible of keeping a gate up like from the junction to the top of Lake Town Canyon. It's public lands on both sides and there's fences on both sides, but it has to be open range and the responsibility of the driver not to hit the cow.
Are you talking about if somebody fails to close a gate or something and the cows get out?
A, a four wheeler or, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a Utah Supreme Court case on this where it's in Spanish Fork Canyon and it was with horses. And the horse owner had a gate that keeps, that kept the horses off of that big road that goes up Spanish Fork Canyon with the Provo to the reservoir up at Heber. And, uh, there was a, there was a car-horse collision with, you know, catastrophic, catastrophic injuries to the driver. And they sued the horse owner and the Utah Supreme Court held that, um, in order to collect against the horse owner, you have to prove that they were negligent, that they negligently allowed their horses onto the road. And so here, because in that case, it was something similar where somebody had gone through recreationally and not latched the gate. And so the Supreme Court held that the, the only way that the horse owner could be liable is if the horse owner himself was negligent in allowing the horses onto the roadway. And so they couldn't recover there. But in the situation where we have people who are not only negligently letting their cows graze in between the fences, uh, we're intentionally allowing that to happen. The, it's a scary situation for the livestock owner because you could have huge liability. Because that little thread in between the fences is not open range. Does that make sense? Nope.
No.
But um but in your situation, if you live outside of town, uh this proposed statute would declare uh the responsibility to be fenced out, and so for all private landowners who don't want cattle in their lands, uh it's the livestock on, it's the li- private landowner's job to then uh erect a lawful fence to keep livestock off of your property.
I hope you can answer his question in your next ordinance. Cause when you got cows on both sides of the fence and one cow, one person's fence, one, one one landowner doesn't do any of the fence maintenance, it won't help, but his cows are continually getting through the fence, then
Do you mind if I ask you some more questions about Rich County? So you have a, you have a county road in between your property and your neighbors?
No, he's talking about just a field with a fence.
Just a plain field with fence? And the fence exists right now? And, but the fence has defects or something, or where the cows getting across?
The neighbor's cows are really good at going through the fence, because once they start, they're really hard to stop.
Okay. So the fence is just So the fence
Well, I, I, I can be talking about my neighbor as well, so I mean, I, we're talking about the same situation, he just has, it's a different, but it's, it's countywide, it's general, it's just a general issue.
Yeah. General.
Okay. Well?
And, and, and then the problem is, then you say, well, if you don't want your cows, if you don't want my cows in there, fence them out. And take no responsibility. See, we're turning that all over now to the person whose cows keep continually getting in, it's my job to keep, keep them out.
Yeah. So this ordinance and the next ordinance kind of both have something to say about that. But what this ordinance would do is it um it makes it so that you don't have a cause of action for trespass when your neighbor's livestock gets onto your private land, unless you ha- had erected a lawful fence, which is defined by the statute. If you did elect a lawful fence, and they still get in, then you do have a potential cause of action. But this proposed ordinance would make it fence out. So if cows are getting into property, and you're in open range, which outside the towns we all would be, um you would have to, an obligation to fence those out. The next ordinance at eleven fifteen talks about um construction and maintenance of agrifol- agricultural um fences, and that would have something to say about that as well.
Okay, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Moving second that we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We move to table a motion on, on the domestic livestock, fence in, fence, fence out until we have the public hearing with the uh ordinance of fence maintenance.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to table this last discussion until we talk about our fence construction and maintenance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do you want to say, yeah, lead up?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Rich County has had, so here, this next issue we're talking about is um um agricultural fences. Um Rich County has had an ordinance in place that defines neighbors' responsibilities for constructing these, maintaining them, uh that puts prohibitions on removing them without, uh you know, advising your neighbors, things like that. We've had that ordinance in place since nineteen ninety seven. Uh since nineteen ninety seven, the Utah code has uh been uh changed, that it now has uh it's Title Four, Chapter twenty six of the Utah State Code, and that chapter is called Enclosures and Fences. And uh this state law uh really covers all of these issues. Um let me just go through what it covers here. So this is state law. Um it says that a person who willfully or uh throws down a fence, or opens bars or gates in any enclosure other than the person's own enclosure, um or one that they jointly own, is guilty of a Class C misdemeanor and liable for any damages that are caused as a result. So if you are an ATV rider and you fail to close the gate, or something like that, it's both a Class C misdemeanor and imposes liability on you for any damages that accrue. Um and here, and it talks about what are called partition fences, those fences in between neighbors. And it says if two or more persons agree to fence an enclosure or to the construction of a partition fence, um the cost of construction and maintenance of the fence shall be apportioned between each party to the agreement based upon the amount of land enclosed. And so uh here, if you have two neighbors who agree to put up a fence to, for agricultural purposes to partition, uh they each bear the cost of construction and maintenance. Uh but that is premised on an agreement between the two of them to put up a fence. Uh it also states that a person who is a party to that agreement, uh who fails to maintain uh their part of the fence is liable in a civil action for any damage sustained by another. And so uh if two neighbors have agreed to put up that fence, and it needs um maintenance, and if one party doesn't maintain it, um then that party who fails to maintain has a potential civil liability against them. Three, it states if a person has enclosed land with a fence, and the owner of an adjoining land parcel desires to then enclose their land also, um so that they would use the partition fence, the owner of the adjoining land uh has to pay the owner of the existing fence one half of the value of that land in order to use it. So if you have one neighbor who's fenced their land, and the next neighbor then wants to fence theirs, they can only use that partition fence if they pay half of the value. Um it states that um if a person whose land is enclosed in whole or in part by a partition fence ceases to improve um the person's land, or opens the enclosure, um you have to give notice to your neighbor that you're going to remove the enclosure, um and give the neighbor an opportunity to pay for a reasonable value for the fence, so that a partition fence relying on can't just disappear one day, that a neighbor who relies on it has a chance to buy it. Um it requires thirty days' notice before you remove or change a partition fence, and um and then it sets out a procedure, um uh it states that if a landowner has put up a partition fence, um a qualified landowner may require an adjoining landowner to pay one half of the cost of a fence if the fence is or becomes a partition fence separating the landowner's tract from the uh adjoining landowner. Um the cost is reasonable for that type of fence, and the type of fence is commonly found in that particular area, and the construction of the fence is no more expensive than the costs for posts, wire, and connectors. Um if the adjoining landowner refuses, the qualified landowner may have a civil action against the adjoining landowner for one half the cost of that portion of the fence. And so if you have a partition fence with your neighbor and cows keep getting through, if you said that was an issue with maintenance, then you each have uh a statutory obligation to pay half for the maintenance of that fence. Does that answer anything?
Yeah, I thought the other way.
Okay. That's state law. Um there are also, um so I guess the question here with our state, our county ordinance was just, do we still need it, uh because it is now covered by state law? The only difference uh between our county ordinance and state law are two. Um our county ordinance goes a little further and says um that you well, our county ordinance gives uh attorney's fees on any of these issues, which state law does not, so that goes a little further. And then um other than that, these two ordinances are very similar. Uh so I guess the question that initially brought this up is, do we want to leave this on the books, or do we want to repeal it and just rely on state law? Which covers the same ground.
Is it, is there anything in black and white of what part of the fence, how you determine? I know we've always said you meet, meet in the middle and fence the ride, or whatever. Is there anything in there of which part of your fence you're responsible for?
Yeah, I think it did that with the right, let me see. Um current code is uh each party shall be obligated to pay half of the actual cost of the fence, uh shall be obligated to construct half of the boundary line fence to their left, standing at the center of the fence.
Okay.
Um and then when it comes to maintenance, um
Should be the same.
You're, each party is responsible for maintaining their half, which is if you stand, I'm assuming facing each other, everybody's responsible for maintaining to the left.
Okay.
If a neighbor fails to do that, um then you can uh do it yourself and then sue them for damages.
Yeah, you just hope that the river's on the right, the rock landing on the right. The, the left is the best.
Yeah.
What, now that's divided, defined in state code, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, do you mean is the left thing in the state code?
Yes. Cause we don't, we don't have that ordinance in our, or yeah, we don't have that ordinance, draft ordinance in our pocket, so I was just trying to look and see.
I think we ought to keep it, and then if the state changes, then we don't, ours wants change.
You actually bill it, uh state code just says half, it doesn't say left or right.
I think we define it.
Yep.
There's, there's definitely no harm in just leaving our ordinance in, at worst case, in place, in, but since it's redundant, but it's a fine ordinance.
Do you want to open this up to public?
Yep.
We need a public hearing? Okay, all motion that we open a public hearing, turning uh fencing.
Second.
Moving second that we uh open this up to a public hearing on the m- construction and maintenance of fences. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What do you think, Lanny?
That's kind of the way I was thinking, unless
We've always done, huh?
I uh just don't know where I am.
Depends on your neighbor whether it happens or not.
I don't know. Yeah.
Sometimes you get, they, they always say good fences make good neighbors, but
Yeah.
Sometimes that doesn't work.
That's kind of tricky, because the remedy here is that you have a civil action, so you have to go to court and s- and seek
That's, doesn't make it in person.
Yeah.
That doesn't
So it's not fine.
And it'd have to be, it'd have to be pretty damaging to make it worth that too. Not to mention the relationship, but but it'd cost a lot to do that.
Yeah. You know, the, well, never mind. It's just, it's just difficult. Some neighbors are you know, rely solely on you to keep their cows out, that's they get into that.
Yeah.
But I, I would think we would want to keep that in, and
I, I would like the definition of middle of the fence and left, and that's defined that way, and um that way it assigns some responsibility of at least what part of the fence is yours to maintain versus theirs. And I think that, that would give, that would give some some definition of where if the cows are getting out, and there's a problem with the fence, that's your half of the fence.
Yeah.
Which would be helpful.
Okay, any other public comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, moving second that we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, basically, maybe we, I probably ought to go ahead and take action on those two um items. I would move that we approve the uh ordinance for domestic livestock and free to graze freely, defining the responsibility of trespass, and I also would move that we approve the ordinance for uh construction of fence and the maintain- maintenance of fence between landowners.
And that would just be leaving our current ordinance in place.
Alright.
Okay, I'll second. What is motions?
So you just copied the offensive that's up.
Say?
I think we can do it this.
Moving second that we adopt the ordinance of domestic livestock to graze freely in defining liability for their trespass on, on private land. Any more discuss, in second, any other discussion? Did we have any questions on, on that?
Not on that one, no.
About the open range, all that, I guess that's not included in this, the open range?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um also the motion of construction and maintenance on fence, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
We don't have the ordinance numbers on those, so I'm not really sure what the ordinances are going to be. They haven't been assigned.
We'll have to get that to you, Chantel. Okay.
Okay.
What was the next on campground?
So that's our master copy there, do you want to assign that? I'll take that copy with me today.
You voted yea, huh?
Mm-hmm. It is.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get a copy back to Annalisa.
Chantel.
Someone just needs to sign right there. You can just sign it for Annalisa. Okay, let me uh give this to you. Okay, let me, uh, give this to you, and then you give it a, a ordinance number and then date right there. Will you just, either you or Annalisa just scan it and you know, you have it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I mean, we, it comes up enough that we may wanna look at having a specific ordinance about prohibiting people from putting cows out in between a fence and a county road to graze.
Purposely.
Where it would be something that the sheriff can clearly point to, you know, right now it comes from case law and statutes and things, but just something very specific that it would be to intentionally let cows out to graze inside of a fence on a roadway.
It'd be good bec-.
Something very specific that.
It'd be good because there's different scenarios where people are trying to graze the little county road, whereas if a cow gets out on the state highway and gets hit, it's, it's a whole different ball of wax.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
Alright. Talk about ordinance for application development, uh, operation, maintenance, and of RV parks.
Can we have, uh, Mitch come up here and join us?
Sure.
State your name.
Mitch Paulson, planning administrator for the county.
How are you, Mitch?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, good. Do you wanna lead up on this one, or?
Sure, be happy to.
Okay.
Um, so, in re- in response to a request for a campground, the county put in, uh, a moratorium in place back in April, and so the planning commission has worked fastidiously on developing an ordinance to help, um, help, uh, you know, bring those, those things together that we thought would be worthwhile in providing policy on within the county. Um, to start down this road, we just, you know, rather than reinventing the wheel, we grabbed a campground ordinance from another county that seemed to have a lot of the applicable, uh, scenarios and started working, uh, working through those items that may be a little bit different in Rich County, and writing it by both planning and zoning and the county commission with regular updates. Um, and what we have come up with is what we feel is a pretty good ordinance. The, uh, planning commission felt like the original ordinance lacked detail and definition, which we have included some in. And all of this, bear in mind, is in regards to a proposed or pending, uh, application to come before us. So I'm just gonna walk through some of the things that we've added that have helped to.
Interject, just a thought.
You bet.
Okay, so, uh, we emailed out to, you, each of you should have received, we polled similar ordinances from Weber, uh, Bearlake County, Washington County, uh, Morgan County, and, um, I, we both thought that the Bearlake's ordinance, Bearlake County's ordinance was, uh, the simplest and probably the best to draw from. And so ours is largely based on Bearlake's ordinance. And then Weber County, uh, had an interesting section where they talked about rural campgrounds, you know, maybe up in the mountains or something where it's just a totally different thing than an in-town RV park, and so we included, uh, that as well. Go ahead.
Alright, so we will go over all of the, the particulars, we're gonna identify some of the things that the planning commission has asked for additional detail on that helps to, you know, rein in the ordinance itself. And the first one is on usable acres, um, you know, usable acres, and we've talked about this in commission meeting. Is, so that when we're calculating the density, it means the land capable of being used for camping or recreational purposes. Usable acres excludes roads, roadways, water, wetlands, uh, and also slopes greater than twenty-five percent to be used for, used by people. Uh, when we go down to campsite, uh, we add a little bit of specificity in there because we, you know, as a rural area, we can see that people aren't just going to wanna use a piece of property for RVs and tents, but there's definitely an interest in even like, uh, yurts or other soft-sided, not hard, um, uh, facilities, you know, tents, not tents, uh, yurts, and even teepees, um.
Conestoga wagons.
Conestoga wagons, right, so we included, uh, RVs, tents, yurts, or other semi-permanent structures, um, as, um, you know, as things to be put on a campsite, or considered part of a campsite.
So, on that, my question is, so when you say semi-permanent, is there a definition of what's semi-permanent?
Uh, we don't have a defined definition, no, so to me, things like, um, oh, what are they called, um, tiny houses, tiny houses actually have a concrete foundation versus a tiny house that can be rolled in on wheels.
Okay.
So what we do right now, and, uh, defines campsite, foresight, it means an area within a campground designed or used to accommodate one party or a single RV, tent, yurt, or other semi-permanent structure intended for overnight accommodation.
So, so i- the overnight accommodation means that it doesn't stay there?
Correct.
Well, it's, it's designed, it's designed for that, but, I mean, a yurt might be there for twenty years or something, but, um, but right now it's, the definition is, is designed for one party overnight accommodation, and it's on the list of examples like an RV, a tent, a yurt, um.
Okay, I guess, I guess my definition of campground is is that you don't, you don't have yurts, or you don't have semi-permanent structures, I mean, it's campground.
So you think, you think those should be separated as a different ordinance?
If, if it's a, if it's a true campground.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I don't know, I guess my, maybe in my mind, I, I'm, I guess it's come in, you stay overnight, and, or up to five or six or seven nights or whatever it is, but, but it's not, it's not a semi-permanent structure that's there, and it's not a yurt that's there. The yurt, a yurt that's there becomes, I mean, even though it may be semi-permanent.
It's a fixture on the land.
It's a fixture on the land.
It's a motel.
And I, and I guess I'm not sure if we're addressing it in this ordinance or how that works. I mean, I'm thinking of a couple of different locations that have yurts.
Mm-hmm.
And, so, do we consider them? Yeah, I, I, I don't know, it's a whole different ballgame.
So the, kinda what spurred this is right now, in the absence of this ordinance, we would just deal with that as like a subdivision? Or someone wanted to put up.
A, a yurt or a teepee?
Conestoga wagons or something, you know, twelve conestoga wagons that people say, and all we have right now to look at it is a subdivision. Which is.
Not really applicable because they're not separating the land and selling it to someone else.
Kind of nonsense, kind of nonsensical. So right now, we wouldn't have a good way. So the idea here was just to cover things like, um, camp rims where you have, you know, picnic table, a fire pit, and a place to put a tent. Or RV parks, where you have picnic table, you know, those kind of, you pull the RV in instead of tent. Or, um, ones where instead of an RV or a tent, there's just a wagon, a copy of a, a teepee or something that just stays there, but it's not growing utilities, it's not a permanent division of land, it's.
And this has changed over time, right? I mean, in the past, all we had were tents and RVs, that was it. But within the last five years, people have started putting up yurts and teepees and geodesic domes, and, you know, things that do occupy the land on a little bit more permanent basis, but they're still camping type uses, right? They're coming in, they spend the night, they leave, or whether it's one night or seven nights. So there's kind of this gray area now where they're, it's like, well, are these really campgrounds, or are they more like a hotel motel unit? Because they are a semi-permanent structure. Hence why we kind of involve them in this because it is still kind of a camping use, and it's not a hotel motel because they're not conjoined, and they're not, you know, a bunch of people in actual, in one structure, that's just separated by a partition wall. We could separate it out and say, well, we consider these hotel motels, or complete it, or do a completely separate ordinance at the same time. But it made sense to us to go, you know what, these are kinda camping types of uses, let's lump 'em in, and maybe in the future, if we have to, we could separate 'em out because they're not really working well for us.
And that was kind of the thinking is, you know, what's the difference between that traditional camping where you have the fire pit and the picnic table, and then a piece of gravel where you put a tent, versus the tent doesn't leave, say the glamping experience. Uh, there's not much difference. What's the difference between a tent that leaves and a conestoga wagon that stays? It didn't seem very diff- like, the county's concerns were very different.
Well, we. We, we call out, we call out RV as, as a recreational vehicle, if will, or camping trailer, but we don't really call out semi-permanent or yurts. So I was wondering, you know, I mean, we define what an RV is, but we don't really define what semi-permanent is.
Yeah, sure, right.
I, and not that I, I guess, you know, we're, we call out one, but we don't really call out another. So, I just, I don't know that that's an issue, I just wondered if there oughta be a definition of what a semi-permanent structure intended, I, I mean, I, I don't know. The word permanent makes me a little nervous when you start saying semi-permanent. Permanent means all summer, does that have a bathroom? You know, what to what, you know, an RV, you know, it's a pretty, even though they can sit there all summer.
Mm-hmm.
We, we call that out, an RV. But, I, just a thought.
Mm-hmm.
Krista?
I'm Krista Klein, um, I just agree with Bill and Sam that life springs from yurts and these sorts of things are much more permanently attached. You show up with a toothbrush, you don't show up with, you know, when you're camping, you bring everything you need, your sleeping bag, your, whatever thing. Uh, you eat in your own water, where this is more like a hotel, where you show up with a toothbrush and pajamas and bathrooms are provided, beds are provided, um, sometimes kitchens are provided. So even though there's soft walls, they're more like they're short-term rental, in my mind. But they can be removed, but they're also not as easy to remove as an RV, just hot lock, you've still got your electrical or, or some, um, sanitary, you know, water and sewer type, or not sewer septic, systems that are been, you know, put in place to support this kind of accommodation. The impact on the land is more permanent, I mean.
I mean, it's, it, think about the K O A, I mean, they have cabins, I mean, yet they're called a campground.
Right, that's true. What is conestoga classified, do you know, is it a campground?
Yeah.
Zoned as well, yeah.
So maybe we can put a pin in that and double back to it, and as we work through this ordinance, looking at what things are, what regulations are suggested, and if we see any where you would suggest it one way for a yurt and a different way for an RV, then we
Come back and revisit.
come back and. Um, do you, do you need, do you guys have copies of this?
We, we got a copy of this, huh?
I can give you a copy if you need.
Yeah, we have a copy of this one.
Sam, do you need a copy?
I got one here, yeah.
And John, do you have a copy? I need a copy.
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move through just kinda slowly here.
Okay.
Um.
So talk about the application process, now that we're done with the definitions. Is that what you're thinking?
Let's start at section three and just kinda go through.
Okay. So conditionally used permits required, it's unlawful for a person to construct, enlarge, alter, or improve any RV park or campground, or to cause the same to be done unless the person holds a valid conditionally used permit. So, they need a conditionally used to propose one, they need a conditionally used to alter one.
Can you speak just a little louder with our destruction we got going on in the hall?
Yeah. I apologize.
And you might, you might wanna, yeah, you might wanna.
Those behind you, you're speaking.
And I'll, and I'll try to do this while you're speaking.
Maybe you can go over there, right?
Maybe you can go over here and I'll swap with Ben. When you're, yeah, when you're speaking, just, yeah, thank you, I mean, I, sorry about our construction.
No, we totally get it. Uh, it's, so under conditionally used permit required, it's unlawful for any person to construct, enlarge, alter, or improve any RV park or campground, or cause the same to be done unless the person holds a valid conditionally used permit. So any new campgrounds, any alterations of campgrounds require a conditionally used permit. So in the application process, RV park and campground development applications shall be processed as conditionally used permits. In addition to those requirements specified for the processing of conditionally used permits, the following additional criteria shall be applied to the review of RV park and campground developments. So the proposed development will not result in the obstruction or interference with existing traffic patterns in the area. The proposed development will reasonably ensure the safety and well-being of patrons. The proposed development will reasonably ensure the peace and enjoyment of neighboring property owners and the surrounding community. And the proposed development reasonably addresses concerns regarding visual screening, dust control, management of parking and traffic, buffering from adjoining properties, sanitation, and impacts on law enforcement. So all those things that would help to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the community and blend the existing landowners. So the application contents, uh, will contain, the drawings are to be a readable scale showing the area and dimensions of the proposed development, the topography, number, location, design, layout of all campsites, layout of interior roads and parking areas, location, size of all structures to be included in the park, type and placement of screening, buffer zones, landscaping, placement of trash container, waste disposal sites, restrooms, and bodies of water. And that helps me as a administrator to be able to look at all these things and go, well, do they have reasonable flow? Are, do they have reasonable number of campsites? Is the topography going to work for this, does it violate the twenty-five percent rule that we have later on? Um, does it preserve, you know, water features such as wetlands, streams, creeks, stuff like that? Um, and that there are restrooms available, that there are trash receptacles, stuff like that, so they're not just, you know, so people have a place to put those things. Um, so the application will also include area maps showing the proposed development in relation to adjacent parcels of land. Um, also a list of property owners within three hundred feet of the exterior boundaries of the, the project. Um, that's so that we can notify the adjacent property owners and follow, uh, the protocols for, uh, public, public notice. Um, any other information deemed necessary by the zoning administrator. Um, operation and maintenance requirements, a park attendant must be on duty within the RV park or campground at all times of operation. Uh, this helps to keep things under control. Uh, registration records must be kept for patrons, this shall include the name, date, permanent mailing address, and license plate for each patron. A permanent RV parking campground is not allowed, no RV or camping patron shall stay longer than thirty days at a time, except for a campground close to or enclosed. RVs shall be maintained in a readily renewable condition at all times. The county sheriff, zoning administrator, or billing inspector shall have the authority to require the disuse and removal of any RV or camp in, if in his determination the RV or camp is being used in violation of this section. The operator shall provide for continued maintenance of landscaping, buildings, buildings and grounds, and the property shall be kept free from litter. Um, campgrounds located adjacent to agricultural land are responsible for construction and maintenance of fencing to prevent livestock intrusion. The design standards associated with RV parks and campgrounds. There shall be a minimum of twelve feet from structures and other RVs. Restroom facilities shall be located within four hundred feet of any campsite, and handicap access, access to restroom facility is required. A maximum density of twenty campsites per usable acre will be allowed. Um, and this goes back to that definition of what is an allowable density, right, used to track roads, wetlands, steep slopes, stuff like that. The campground shall have at least two ingress and egress points, there shall be at least one parking space provided inside the area of each campsite. Parking areas and roadways shall be constructed in surface so as to minimize fugitive dust. Structures shall be set back a minimum of a hundred feet from any shorelines or waterways. Campsites shall be set back at least fifty feet from state or county roads, measured from the property line or edge of travel surface, whichever is greater. Um, campground shall have appropriate waste receptibles placed near ingress and egress points, and campsites shall be well-marked and numbered. No external structures are to be attached to RVs. RV sites and sites intended for tent camping shall be segregated. All structures to be used in the design and development of RV parks and campgrounds shall be permanent structures meeting county code requirements. Acceleration and deceleration lanes shall be provided when the campground entrance is in close proximity to a heavily traveled roadway, and these lanes shall be at least three hundred feet in length. A speed limit inside an RV park or campground shall be set at five miles an hour. Um, the surface width for internal roadways shall be at least sixteen feet, the surface width for one-way roads shall be at least twelve feet. All roads in the campground should be graded and gravelled. There shall be at least two restrooms for each campsite on average. All wastewater shall be disposed of into a public sewer system whenever available. Where a connection to a public sewer system is not possible, wastewater shall be discharged into a wastewater disposable system meeting county code. Um, all campgrounds will be required to connect to county roads meeting twenty-four feet travel surface standard unless a variance is requested by the applicant and approved by the board, which would be the variance board. Proof of liability insurance will be required for all campgrounds. And proof of means, the ability to communicate with sheriff or EMS through landline or cellular means. Um, and I don't know, we're, we have to be fussy on that if they have a satellite phone and that's what they use, um, just as long as they have that ability to communicate. Um, accessory uses may be approved, provided the primary usage and enjoyment are for camping patrons. Accessory uses shall be placed at least fifty feet from any exterior park boundary. Uh, buffers and vegetation, a hundred-foot vegetative buffer will be required when the proposed campground is adjacent to existing residential uses. Buffers should be of sufficient density to substantially reduce light and noise pollution imposed on existing residential uses. Additional buffers may be required by the county. Land between the campsites and the exterior property lines shall have sufficient existing or planted trees to separate the campground from adjacent lands and serve as a buffer zone. The vegetative buffer shall not be used for any other purpose in connection with the campground, like storage, parking, dedicated recreation, et cetera. A minimum of one tree and one bush shall be planted at each campsite to provide shade, orange, and/or dilute the adjacent campsites. Special considerations for camp, for forest campgrounds. Uh, due to setting up forest campgrounds, the following special provisions shall apply. Campsite, campsite shall be spaced in such a manner so as not to, more than five individual campsites shall occupy less than one acre of land. Clusters of campsites should consist of approximately twenty campsites and should be separated by natural barriers such as ridges, valleys, heavy timber, or similar natural features. Or by a sufficient distance to assure compatibility with the natural landscape. There should be safe access in the campground to a single entrance where possible. All roads in the campground shall be graded and gravelled and shall not exceed a grade of more than fifteen percent. All roads shall be built and maintained to allow reasonable access by emergency medical vehicles at all times during operation of the campground. Turnaround loops shall be constructed by at least a forty-five-foot turn radius measured to the center of the road. A minimum distance of two hundred to three hundred feet shall separate roads within the campground. Water supply shall be from public water supply or from another source meeting requirements of county code and state law. There shall be a minimum of one hydrant for five camp units. Approval from the county fire chief is required. Fireplaces shall be located at least five feet from any table. A five-foot radius cleared of all flannel material shall be maintained around fireplaces and grills. The county may attach reasonable conditions as may be necessary to address concerns regarding the health, safety, and enjoyment of patrons and neighboring communities as deemed necessary. Uh, and we do have a few exemptions. The fully serviced campsites may be used to reduce the required number of bathrooms. This reduction is at the discretion of the planning and zoning board. The county recognizes that the preceding subsections are not applicable to all circumstances because of unusual topography, access to water. Or other circumstances, and the county may consider exemption from specified conditions on a case-by-case basis. An applicant seeking an exemption must file a request in writing with the planning and zoning administrator, stating the request exemption and providing a justification for the exemption. Existing campgrounds in existence at the time of adoption's ordinance will be regulated as a grandfather condition.
Which one, uh, question for clarification? Wastewater, county requirements, is that whatever health department requirements?
Yeah, presume so.
Okay, 'cause I know the wastewater is to be so far away from any body of water.
Right.
Not just bare lake, but any body of water.
Right, sure.
We have several ordinances and a huge section of county code on wastewater disposal.
And we don't, we don't identify what zones campgrounds would go in, but my thoughts was you make them conditional in the agriculture zone. Just to simplify.
So on B, there shall be safe access into the campground through a single entrance where possible.
Where are you looking at?
On, on B, uh.
Is this the forested one?
Yeah, due to set, setting up forest campgrounds, the following special provisions.
Yep. Yep.
So we've. We're saying that they can have a campground with just a single entrance?
Under the special considerations for forest campgrounds, yeah.
So we have a fire in the campground and they have no way out of, another way out?
Well, that's kind of what that would indicate, yeah. So maybe we need to change that to, uh, an emergency access.
I was, I was gonna say they can have a single acc, uh, single entrance, but there must be a, an emergency exit somewhere.
Yeah.
If you've got, you know, you've got campsites and all of a sudden the one campsite's on fire at the, the only entrance in and out. You know, I mean, I, basically, it's just get up and run versus being able to just pull out and move away.
Sure, right. Yeah, most of the campgrounds I've seen don't actually have a second access. Um, you know, in the forest, you pull in, it's usually a loop or a system of loops that have got a single access point. But we can certainly include an emergency access if necessary.
Almost all campgrounds have an emergency access. All, all campgrounds, I mean, it's not, it's not open as a, as an access in and out.
Right, right, but it's a gravel hardened surface that you can open up to get let people in.
Right. They can actually, yeah.
Probably chain link gate on most of them.
Well, yeah.
You can open them and go at them.
Yeah. I, just, just a thought, I mean, I, that's a real concern, I mean, you know, especially as campgrounds. You know, we're, we're telling them they have to have a tree and a bush in between campsites.
Yep.
And there's gonna be probably vegetation alongside the road. My concern is, is, you know, they're gonna have open fires and a highly probability of sometime having a, 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 a fire.
So what if we changed B to say there shall be safe access into the campground through two entrances where possible?
Well, a single entrance and an, and an emergency exit, I mean.
And an emergency.
I, I'm, I'm just thinking we probably need to address that somewhere.
Through a single entrance and an additional emergency exit where possible.
Exit.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know the. When the county grades a road, it's very dusty. And I seen that thing. Somewhere about the dust, and I wanted to make sure, I wanted to clarify, is that gonna be the county's responsibility to keep that dust down, or is it gonna be there?
Within the campground or within the county road?
Within the county road.
I think within the campground, it is the campground operator's, uh, job to keep the dust down.
Yeah, it was there on F, you said the surface or.
Yeah, this would be a design requirement.
So if somebody makes a campground in, out in rural, on a county road, are we gonna be dust guarding, or, I guess we'll have to.
Do you mean on the county road outside the campground?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, not outside the campground.
It's a county road.
Well, it is, but I mean, I mean, I, that would be. So which one are you reading?
F, it's on page three. Four.
I don't read that, that the county would have any new obligations to maintain.
I don't, I don't, I don't either.
I, I'm not reading it either, but I'm saying, are we gonna have?
I think, I understand what Sim's saying is if there's a county road that doesn't have much use, suddenly put in a campground and then the use goes way up on that county road. It becomes a dust situation where it previously wasn't.
Because.
So what? So then what?
I, well, I think the, the increased, I think with the property taxes would come the responsibility to take care of that, that road.
So the campground holds for the in property tax?
No, I mean for the county. I mean, if it becomes a high-traffic road, it's.
Not a legal obligation.
No, it would just be people complaining to us.
The county might just think it's a good idea to maintain it differently than before if use is out.
Yeah.
That's my, that's, the basis of my deal is, right now, that road is way better than what it needs to be for what it's used for. But then if there gets a campground up there, that's gonna have a lot of use and a lot of dust and. Sean?
I know of circumstances where you can call it a mitigation fee where a per-user fee is attached that you get for this, say, campsite. That you put into a restricted fund that can then go to help offset off-site mitigating factors.
Well, and where it is a, it's designed as a conditional use permit, um. And. And one of the, under section four. Um. You know, the, the overriding goals are listed as ensuring the peace and enjoyment of neighboring property, surrounding community. Uh, reasonably addressed concerns regarding visual screening, dust control, uh, management of parking and traffic. As a conditional use permit, you can attach restrictions that are tailored to this specific project, right?
Mm-hmm. And so dust mitigation could be one of those.
It's listed as one of the four, uh, goals that are.
And then they could come in, they could come in to the county commission and say, we would like dust mitigation done.
Yeah.
Or, or even the neighbors, I guess, like if they have other neighbors that are being affected by this, the neighbors could request something.
Yeah. On a case-by-case basis, but as a conditionally used permit, that's a good model to, uh, give the county the most control. Over, over the, of each specific project being requested.
Yeah, it's something, yeah.
So you're talking about the size of the two.
We did, we canceled our meeting.
Is that coming right there?
Yeah. We need to talk to you about that one, Tim. Just a quick question.
I have to go drive that. I don't know.
And so I guess to circle back, um, does anybody see, uh, as we go through these application process and the restrictions? In a place where you differentiate, say for, if you had twenty Conestoga wagons per acre versus twenty campsites per acre?
Do we? Yeah, probably, but I don't know how. Are we gonna catch flak for saying we need a tree or a shade bush for every camp?
Are we going to catch flak, like from a, 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 someone who comes in and requests that? We can, but then we can say, it's in the ordinance, do it. If, that, that's one of those things where you can say if that, if you feel like that's excessive, it's easy to, it's easy to remove.
And so, uh.
I just don't know if it's our responsibility to make them.
Put that in.
Make it nice enough to have some shade, I, and I, we all want it, but.
Right. And, and that's the, that's the thing. We, we can say, well, we just, we don't really wanna get involved in the campground business, so you just do whatever you need to do. Or we can have a little bit of, uh, skin in the game and say, we'd like this to be nice. We like when people come up to Ridge County and know that our campgrounds are good and what they've been well thought out. They're not always safe, but they're practical. And there are some, you know, fine, you know, fine-tuning things that we've included in there. But it's not one of those, we have to have it.
And if there's a circumstance somewhere it's not, uh, practical to do that, uh, section twelve allows them to apply for exemption.
That's true too.
And so if they say like, we can do, you know, we can't do a tree in every campground, but we'll have, you know, we can do this instead. Um, they can apply for an exemption.
Okay.
And along with that, you know, campgrounds are not humongous moneymakers. It's not like they're subdivisions. And so we do need to be a little bit sensitive to their profit margins and how much we require of them, so.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you start, you start requiring them to plant trees and vegetation, then they've gotta have the burden of water then to keep them alive.
Sure.
So unless you've got live water there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, you know, we're not, we're not requiring them to have water, right? So requiring them to have vegetation. Brings a whole new aspect of somebody, of some, of some type of location that does not have water, that people are just bringing it in to.
Again, exemptions.
So planning and zoning has not approved this, yeah?
They have, they had reviewed it in their May meeting, but not their June meeting.
Okay.
But the comments that have been made in the May meeting have been incorporated into this.
I still think we oughta call out something with semi-permanent or just take out. Take out semi-permanent altogether or something. If we're gonna call out RV, we need to call out a year and a semi-permanent. Somehow.
I agree.
Is the, um, so with the restrictions, the application process. Um, are you okay including having this govern, like if you wanted to have Conestoga wagons? Or TPs? And what is it that the applicant that's on the, that's wanting to build right now?
Uh, it's some type of geodesic dome.
Geodesic dome, so.
Yeah. Uh, I like semi-permanent structure only because we don't know what's going to come down the pike, right? Whoever thought anybody would wanna stay in a covered wagon? Or a yurt, or a geodesic dome for that matter. It's kind of a catch-all, go, we, we've said it, it's.
What if Bill beefed up the definition of semi-permanent and just specified, like, you know, no utilities coming to it, um.
But they will have some utilities, I think.
So, how about soft walled?
Um. Soft wall, like.
Or, or not two-by-four exterior construction.
Yeah, 'cause you don't want twenty tough sheds.
Right.
Right.
I think, I think that's not the intent.
We don't want tiny houses on this ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, so you, you would remove, uh, all utilities. It wouldn't be permanently affixed to a foundation.
Right.
Um.
Well, my, my question is. Is it an RV camp or is it a? Is it gonna turn into a, I mean, still those cabins. They're basically semi-permanent, but they're, but they're mobile. So they're not, they're not hooked to the ground, but you bring them in and all of a sudden, there they are, it's this camp that. Are these campsites gonna turn into a, a cabin site versus an RV site?
Sure. And, and oftentimes RVs are not year-round, whereas other things like yurts and geodesic domes are, can be year-round.
Are. Yeah, are they gonna use this in the winter?
Right.
That, my understanding of this particular project is they're planning to run utilities to the units, just so for future thought. They talked about putting kitchens and bathrooms, you know, having running water in the, in this particular project itself. So just, you know, a look ahead.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like camping.
It's all the campground.
Well, the form of camping is taken on a whole new meaning. I mean, you know, when you'll pay.
Right.
Three thousand dollars a night to sleep in a tent just because it has a queen bed in it.
I mean, if you're talking about running utilities to geodesic domes, then you probably, it, it doesn't seem as crazy to fit you under the subdivision ordinance.
Right.
Right. I'll accept the density would work, but.
And you're not, and you're not partitioning off land for, to sell to other people?
To sell, yeah.
It's still maintained under one, one owner.
Yeah.
So is this, I mean, we don't, you don't wanna make a log around, so, uh, that is, maybe there needs to be a semi-permanent ordinance and just a campground ordinance. 'Cause I don't know of squeezing them into a subdivision.
Is the right approach.
Yeah, but also it definitely seems like a campground approach is wrong as well.
And that's one of the risks you run when you're proposing something that, uh, you're not, you've not affixed anything on paper with your application. This is, you know, they, they gave us the notion that these were gonna be on a platform, they were a geodesic dome type of deal. Uh, people would cook on them with, uh, you know, like a Coleman stove. Not a lot of detail in what they've been proposing to us, so we still need an RV, RV park and campground ordinance, but maybe what they're proposing is outside the scope of this.
The only reason I know more about it is 'cause I have a downstream landowner, plus our water rights are on that property, so our best interest. And the, the, the gentleman had come and talked to me in, in depth and showed me pictures and told me exactly what they're visioning. So that's why I know about the kitchens and the bathrooms and the running water and the, I guess would be a septic, I mean, sewer's not a reasonable affair. that's why I know about the kitchens and the bathrooms and the running water and the, I guess would be septic, I mean sewer's not a reasonable effect, so that's the end that's the end end of the vision.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And I had the same thoughts, like, well, this isn't a campground, that it's a short-term rental with soft-walled structures.
Yeah.
And their their intention is to have a place where they can go, but like a lot of people in Bear Lake or around the lake, they can't really afford it on their own, and so they have it through the family, but then they rent it out in the weekends the public to help uh open, justify the cost that they're paying for it.
And that's different, 'cause you don't want people living in a, what's it called, geodesic dome?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't think they have a intention of living there, if they just wanna be at the lake.
But you want it to be so they can't live there, you know, 'cause it may end up being that somebody.
And that's a good consideration, and maybe you just require the utilities, I don't know what the.
So this requires that you can't be there thirty days and that the owner has to be on-site at all times.
More than thirty days. Or or camp host.
Or camp host, and so you wouldn't.
Can the owner of the of the geodesic dome stay there for more than thirty days? And then is it a campground?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, I.
But I think this also implies that uh you wouldn't have an owner of the geodesic dome, you have the owner of the campground.
Right.
And that owner of the campground has to have a representative on-site at all times.
Right, I understand.
Which would take it out of the short-term rental ordinance, um short-term ordinance don't have somebody on-site.
Okay.
Um so
so it sounds like a pretty good ordinance, other than defining semi-permanent, and it probably won't even, it may not even affect what's going on up there.
But it may.
But it may, and it will definitely affect future development.
So let me ask it this way, are we generally okay with this framework for tents and RVs?
I think it's a good framework for tents and RVs.
And are we generally okay with it if you get into like teepees and glampings, you know, which is a big canvas tent that you don't bring with you, the place provides?
Yeah. Yeah.
So it sounds like utilities are kind of a breaking point, if you've got a tent and you've got a way to can't cook inside the tent or outside the tent over the fire.
Oh, I mean, RV parks have like hookups and there might be electrical there or something.
Oh, that's true, yeah. No, that would doubt there's.
I think it's the idea of something that that's there year-round, they could survive the winter.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yurts though.
The Conestoga wagons stay all year.
Don't they move them off for winter?
Uh.
I don't think so.
I didn't think they would move them off for winter, I don't, maybe not.
No, they were they're always side by side.
Do you have any chance to look?
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause I was curious to see if they was stood all the snow.
And is that is that an important factor for us, that it's gone in the winter, I mean?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that could be a barrier of entry, if they're gonna set up something that's taken down, that's that's a little bit different than setting up something that's permanent. You know, that's the difference between permanent and semi-permanent, can it be taken down?
Yeah, like theoretically taken down or that they're required to take down?
A tough shed can be taken out pretty quick.
Yeah.
Um I mean, you might have like RVs at an RV park year-round and a brave camper.
Yeah. I don't know.
One of the artificial deadlines on this is that our um moratorium
My papers.
is is ending.
Probably like today.
Not today.
Pre-December.
Before next month's meeting.
Is it your first six months or is this your extension of an additional six month?
We set a moratorium for ninety days.
Three months.
It's only three months.
So you can extend.
We could extend it, but I think that would require noticing up a public meeting to extend it, which we weren't planning to do.
So we probably need to pass this or not today, sorry. Has it been and then change, has it's written and then change it?
If we beefed up the semi-permanent thing to define that it is capable of being
I yeah, I don't know.
We could do soft-sided, we could do.
Non-fundational.
Non-foundation, I mean, a a hard a hard-sided geodesic dome is different than a teepee.
There are geodesic domes with soft-sided.
Okay.
I think non-fundational might be the key, 'cause something that's sitting on a slab is different than
Uh-huh.
you know, something that has the ground underneath it.
I mean, like they.
How do you define a foundation commissioner? Or was it a boy scout?
I need someone else to do it.
Man, where they use two-by-sixes and they have them in halves, and that became a foundation for ten.
And then you count levels.
Then we get to then we get to define foundation.
'Cause you're not gonna you're not gonna let like a teepee blow away in the wind, it's gotta, you're gonna have something hard holding it down, heavy, I guess.
Who's gonna be telling us anything about this long?
I don't know what to do. We could we could pass this.
I mean, you wanna, it seems like, just having put a lot of thought over, you know, a month on this and and read all the others, it seems like there's not a lot of difference between a glamping experience and a camping experience, one you bring a tent, one they provide the tent, one bringing air mattress, one they have a nice mattress for you. Uh it seems similar also with teepees, um Conestoga wagons, but then I think you hit a a break where you're talking about hard-sided you you there's that division where it's like little cabins and things, um but where is that?
Yeah, I would be fine passing this ordinance as presented and then editing, making changes if we need to down the road, but I don't know how these guys feel about it. I think it's I think it's pretty good.
We do need the two enter the emergency exit on the forest campground, which can be quickly added.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Any changes need another public hearing or?
No.
Substantive substantive changes, like we can't just willy-nilly pencil in stuff, can we?
So.
No. So, uh the the other thing is on uh operation and maintenance requirements. So we have permanent RV parking or camping is not allowed. And then we have no RV or camping, patrons shall stay longer than thirty days at a time except for campground host and employee. So if we're allowing tho these domes they're gonna be lo there longer than thirty days.
Not the patron.
Permanent RV parking or camping is not allowed. Is it is not one of these domes, if it's set up, gonna be a permanent thing?
What, I think it says no RV or camping patron shall stay longer than thirty days.
So you could put up RVs and have the people move every thirty days, but keep the RVs there?
Well, again, going back like a Conestoga wagon, it stays there, but the people can't stay there longer than thirty days.
Well.
I agree with Bill, it's not super clear.
But but see, that's the thing, we're we're saying a no permanent RV parking or camping is not allowed, but then we're turning around and saying no RV or camping patron shall stay longer than thirty days, now you know, state parks will not allow you to keep your, if you rent a spot in their RV park, you can't stay there longer than thirty days. If you're on the forest service, you cannot stay longer in one of their campgrounds or park um longer than seven days. So every seven days they take their trailer and they turn it around and and put it facing the other way, because that's basically the way it made it's set up. But we're we're talking about w you know, we mentioned semi-permanent, but then we turn around and say, you know, you can't you can't be there any longer than thirty days.
Mm-hmm.
So does that mean these domes that we're just talking about have to move from one campsite to the other?
Well, I think what Sixty is trying to capture, we may need to revise it, is that the RV can't, whether you turn it around every thirty days, it it the RV can't be there.
Okay.
And also uh that the patrons can't stay longer than thirty days, um but we I don't think it was, we are intending to say that like a Conestoga wagon
Has to be.
has to be taken out every thirty days. And so maybe if we wrote permanent RV parking is not allowed, so take out the or camping on that, and then no RV or camping patron shall stay longer than thirty days. What do you think about that?
I can see where the like the wagons and the tents that have basically a slab underneath would be what what's considered semi-permanent.
Then maybe we just need to add the semi-permanent clause to that, the semi-permanent structures, yurts, RV or yurts, uh teepees, geodesic domes don't have to be removed after thirty days, something to that effect. 'Cause that that kinda stuff is uh it's um, doesn't make sense to have somebody have to move a yurt a couple of feet just to accommodate the ordinance.
Well, if we're allowing yurts in this in this ordinance, if we're allowing yurts and semi-permanent wagons and and slabs for tents and those kinda things.
Right. Right. Right.
I mean, I I think we're talking about two different things.
Mm-hmm. So some specificity there might be justified.
Mitch, could you just have a subsection that applies to semi-permanent structures as far as utilities and stay laying, or is that putting too many different unrelated things within one ordinance? So I agree, it's like two different animals and it's efficient to put under one, but if you are not specific enough, it's all it's not effective.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't uh don't have a solid answer, 'cause like you say, it's uh they are s very similar uses, but there are some unique structural components that that make them make them a little bit different. It just seems to me that just to keep it simple, that we could revise that C to create special provisions for you know, the semi-permanent structures to maintain their footprint for more than thirty days at a time.
If you just said, if you just took out the or camping on the first sentence, permanent RV parking is not allowed.
Yeah.
No RV or camping patron shall stay longer than thirty days at a time.
Right.
Except for the campground hosts or employee.
Mm-hmm, 'cause well, ultimately that's what we're not looking for is an uh permanent RV park.
Okay. Please settle if you're.
Well, and then the next one down, RVs shall be maintained in readily movable condition at all times. So that only that only pertains to RVs, but if we allow domes and yurts and those kinda things, um I guess what's a movable condition?
Wheels?
Yeah, right, I mean, that 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 was the idea is that that they won't be put up on jacks and have their tires removed.
Slighted tires.
So does domes have wheels?
No, but domes aren't RVs.
We can take them apart. So I guess right now, if you had a private piece of land and you don't, you're not subdividing it, because you're not.
What? Right. It's all under one ownership.
You can keep it one owner, that right now if it was zoned commercial, you could just build this immediately, right?
Mm-hmm.
Without even going through planning zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Just need a business license and that's it.
Right.
And so we're going from an ex state for these of extreme non-regulation to requiring a conditional use permit.
And some regulations, some oversight.
Which is the, I mean, a conditional use permit is what we require for our beach properties, it's like, don't do anything unless you ask us, um so we're going from an extreme non-regulation to our highest level of regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Well, maybe all the caveats are covered with the conditional use, because I agree it is a good ordinance, it's thorough, it's just because we all know about this one specific case, we're like, well, this doesn't, this round peg doesn't fit in this square hole, so what are we gonna do? And it's also an opportunity, like Mitch and I were trying to uh catch stuff that we haven't thought, so it's a it's an opportunity that there's this odd or this unusual um example coming down the line.
Well, I I've never heard of a geodesic dome.
Right.
Well, it's not exactly, it's it's like, you know, the jungle gyms, they show me pictures, it's like the jungle gyms that you see, but then they put a skin over it.
Before. Yeah.
So a geodesic dome is actually more of a permanent structure, it's a it's a building that has hard surface, exterior surface, but this, I would say it's more like a yurt, 'cause it is, it has a framework in which you put a skin over it, but it's not the roundy ice cream cone-looking thing, it's more of a
Yeah.
half-circle looking thing.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
Well, what do you guys think?
Good. That's what my kids always say when I say, what are you thinking, good?
Um it's.
So what did you come up with as far as, is we gonna make any any adjustments at all?
Sure, some changes there, I thought were easy and like, uh one is changing that one entrance on forest campgrounds
Okay.
to one plus an emergency exit where possible. And um that's easy, right?
Easy, yes.
Uh the other one is uh take out um permanent RV parking or camping is not allowed and just take out the words or camping. So it's it 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 refers to the RV is not allowed permanently and patrons no longer than thirty days, so that's an easy one. Um and that's.
That's the only ones I've got.
And then there's the bigger issue, which is, I'm not sure that we've resolved, um this is based pretty tightly on Bear Lakes who has seemed to do well.
Which means we've had no campgrounds come in.
Is that right? It's Bear Lake County?
No.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Isn't that beautiful county? Not one?
Not one.
Not surprising.
We've had a number of wanted to, but it just doesn't doesn't work out, and not because the ordinance necessarily are the ones that I've seen have been adjacent to Highway eighty-nine, which has some pretty strict uh ingress and egress requirements, you know, when it comes to these RVs that are pulled by a twenty-foot-long pickup truck and they got a forty-foot-long RV pulling a twenty-foot-long boat.
Yeah.
Getting on and off the highways is kind of a big deal.
All right, I make the motion that we will, I guess you're gonna close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing? I'll make that motion.
Second.
As a second, we close the public hearing for the uh development, operation, maintenance of RV parks, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have another motion?
Yeah, I'll step out on a limb here and make a motion with the with the adjustments that um we've discussed, that they be incorporated into fast the ordinance for um the application, development, operation, and maintenance of RV parks and campgrounds.
Second that motion. Okay, moving second, the motion is uh with the amend amendments that we've talked about, that this be a approved for the application, development, operation, maintenance of RV parks and campgrounds, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
So when we made changes to the copy that I brought, I'll email Annalisa a copy with those two changes, um and she'll have it there for you to sign
Okay.
when you come in next.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm exhausted.
Don't go anywhere.
We do noise.
We've still got a noise noise ordinance to discuss.
For reals?
Yeah, and it's one that you're gonna be dealing with with the highly rentals.
Okay. Okay, well, I gotta skedaddle around one if that's possible.
It's not.
Okay.
Good night, stay here.
Motion to keep Mitch from leaving. Okay, thank you for your feedback.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Chris.
Thanks for letting me help out, Mitch. Keep you in the loop, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so we gotta have a public, we gotta have a public hearing here on noise ordinance, and we got.
We're sure we have to.
No, I think this is just for discussion.
All right, good.
Um.
I predict this one goes a little quicker, Mitch. I think you should be, you should be good.
It's just so hard to start to regulate something from scratch, you know, you can't.
Well, yeah, you 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 can't anticipate it. Well, that's why ordinance is our dynamic, we change them as we go.
Yeah. All right, um. You want me to start with this?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So, uh, I was sent word that the commission wanted to begin looking at a county noise ordinance, which um we have not had one before, I was surprised, I assumed that we would be tweaking one, we've never had a noise ordinance. We have ones like on the beach, you know, there's a noise aspect on the beach and um, in the short-term rentals, it talks a little bit about noise, but we don't have a noise ordinance. So does everybody have a copy of this that was emailed?
Mm-mm.
Billy got one?
Yep.
Okay.
I have.
You don't?
I, okay.
So, uh, this is just a rough draft that I uh, based off of um uh off of uh, I think Davis and Weber counties that had some. Okay, so here, uh, intent, the purpose is to ensure the peace and enjoyment of people living in visiting Rich County by regulating the creation of noise. Uh, section two, specific noise prohibitions, the following acts are prohibited. Um, A, we have horns and signaling devices. Uh, the sounding of any horn or signaling device on the truck, automobile, motorcycle, emergency vehicle, or other within the county, except as a danger warning signal is provided by vehicle code of the state of Utah. Um. B, uh, musical instruments and speakers. Use of any musical instrument, speaker, radio, television, or other similar device between the hours of ten PM and seven AM in a manner that is plainly audible by other people who are either on public property or using a public driveway or inside their own residences. And um, if you skip now with read a section three A, it defines plainly audible to mean that the noise is loud enough for distinct words or melodies or patterns to be discernible by others. So you're, you're on the street or.
At, at what distance?
You're on, it's just where you're at, you're on the street, you're in a public park, or you're in your own residence, and you can hear the words distinctly, or the melody, or the pattern, like if there's no melody, if it's just a guy banging on drums, you can hear it distinctly, so it's not a low buzz. Um, that's the definition. You can also change th- a d- a different way to look at that in some counties, so you either have, that is loud enough that you can hear the distinct qualities of the sound. Um, some counties also go off of the decibel level, but then we would need to buy for
A, a decibel meter.
A decibel meter for the sheriff's office probably, so that they can measure decibel amounts. Some counties will say, um, you can't create noises that are audible at fifteen decibels in a public space or something between those hours, but we would need to buy that technology. Uh, C, hawkers and peddlers, uh, selling anything by outcry or within any area of the county by um, uh, that is zoned primarily for residential use. Uh, sh- this provision shall not be construed to prohibit the selling by outcry of merchandise food and beverages at licensed sporting events, parades, fairs, circuses, or other similar public entertainment events. D, unloading operation, or loading operations, loading, unloading, opening, or otherwise handling boxes, crates, containers, garbage containers, or other objects between the hours of ten PM and seven AM.
They have garbage trucks that are picking, trucks are up at six o'clock.
Is that the technical up?
During the summertime.
You could say ten PM to six AM.
I wondered if we hadn't updated that, but.
What's Garden City?
I don't work Garden City.
I think six. Six is.
But could they make an exemption for public utilities? And farmer?
Well, it's easier to just change it to six if you want.
For that one item? Or for all of them?
Um, it's totally up to you, I just write what you guys want.
We're not exempting mowers and balers either here.
There are some exemptions coming up here, this is a good time for us to turn to them. Section four, the following are exempted from this ordinance. One is noise related to any authorized emergency vehicle. Um, ambulances, police cars, and so on. Noise resulting from emergency work. Uh, maybe a water main breaks or something. Uh, C, um, noise resulting from any activity for which the person has been granted a permit by the county.
That that takes care of the garbage question? Cause of the permit? Yeah.
In my neighborhood in Farmington, the garbage trucks are rolling like at five AM and nobody cares.
Yeah, it's not the garbage. It's kind of like our life.
It's just, it's not like you're, it's just you're asleep and then you're, they're gone. It's just a quick thing.
Yeah.
Well, we need a agriculture exemption too, cause all our hay gets put up at night, all our alfalfa hay.
How noisy is that?
That's, when I'm watching it in the house, you can hear them, if your windows are open, you can hear them going.
It's noisy enough that they come out and shake their cane at you like this.
So what if we said, what if we said for subsection D, loading operation, loading or unloading, opening, otherwise handling boxes, crates, containers, garbage containers, other objects. Um, you can tweak the hours and then say in a residential zone, would that take care of the agricultural?
We don't have any residential zones really in what? Yeah, we don't have any residential zones in the county.
So you're talking about the in the town anyway?
Sweetwater's a residential zone?
Yeah, but Sweetwater's got their own noise ordinance.
Hmm.
The HOA has its own noise ordinance?
Yeah.
It it does, yeah.
Um. See, I mean, you want, you don't wanna sweep up farmers loading hay and stuff.
And for the most part, you know, that's not, that's not in any residential areas, I mean, or and it's certainly not in the county, and this is a county ordinance, so um, you know, Garden City has their noise ordinance and and the private subdivisions, the majority of them have theirs. So, I I don't know that, but this is a county-wide ordinance and you know, if you're right next to the to the city property, you know, or the city uh um.
Which there are a lot, there are some.
There is, there is, you know, there is an issue, so you can't really say.
Hence maybe the need for the agricultural exemption.
Yeah, so you really can't say subdivision because you're not in the subdivision, but
Yeah.
you're next to the city limits. And uh, and the city limits continue to get moved further and further and further.
Into the agriculture.
Into the agricultural part, but we we don't wanna tie the hands of, I mean, cause there's a, that's the worst thing about particularly during the summertime when and most of the people are here during the summertime, they're gonna complain. You know, there's that, there's that window of time where moisture's right.
And you gotta cut all night.
Doesn't matter whether you're cutting or you're baling all night, you didn't go. But it's.
Do people bail at night?
All night, all night if you can.
All night. Till, till the dew drops.
Till the moist, it's a, it's a moisture issue.
So you wanna do it at night?
Yeah, you have to do it at night.
So, we could either put that in one of the exemptions, or we could just exempt it out right here in D.
All ac- all agricultural activities exempt.
That's what I'd say.
It's pretty broad, but it, you know, I mean, it's rural, it's it's a rural county, I mean, it's gonna, you know, and and
People have to have their livelihoods.
And and most people are, you know, most, most people are pretty considerate, but you know, if your hay is so dry that you can't put it up during the daytime, one o'clock in the morning is when there's enough moisture in the air that from one to three or one to four, or sometimes you can go all night. You know, and I've been in Garden City where I baled and it, but it was in the Garden City city limits where I've had people come right out of their house and come and shake their cane at me and tell them I was waking, I was keeping them up. And it's kinda like, there's, this is agricultural ba- activity's been going on here for years and years and years, and now you moved here and now you want it to stop.
Okay, I like that. So under loading operations, I also see yesterday outside, to make it clear this is an outside type thing. How about the hours ten PM, do you wanna go to six or?
I think at least six, yeah.
Five or?
Six.
Six is probably good, that gives a window of, you know, if they need to get started, I mean, people are just gonna have to be accepting.
E is construction work, um, engaging in construction or construction repair work in a residential area or that can be heard in a residential area between the hours, I just put ten PM and seven AM, but.
I think you, I think we probably oughta stay at six throughout the whole ordinance.
Six.
My personal opinion.
Okay.
For right now.
F, domestic power equipment. Operating or permitting the operation of any power equipment in a residential area or which can be heard in a residential area, including but not limited to a power saw, sander, lawn mower, leaf blower, garden equipment, snow removal equipment, outdoors, but uh, anything outdoors between the hours of, I put ten PM and si- seven, you wanna go to six?
Well, you better at least go to six, cause if you're gonna put snow removal, our guys are plowing roads at four in the morning.
Wonder if we just put an exemption for uh, government activities?
I mean, if you make a that covers the garden, that covers.
Just.
Yeah.
Covers highway like if at night they wanna work on the street so that it's open in the morning? Okay. Uh, G, defects in vehicles, this is my personal pet peeve. Uh, these guys that.
I'm there exempt.
Because they're all farmers.
These guys that alter perfectly good vehicles just to make them louder.
My kid just did that.
Ah. All right, well, he's gonna. Um, operating or permitting the operation or use between the hours of ten PM and, since six, of any truck, automobile, motorcycle, or their motor vehicle that because of disrepair or an alteration emits more noise than a vehicle would if properly.
So, one of the things we we need to capture, ca- capture with this is is that um, a lot of these particular, as they call them, razors um, are modified to the point they're extremely noisy and um, are running up and down the county roads. And I was being facetious when I said twelve AM, I think it probably oughta stay at least to ten, three, ten, and six because that's, that's a big issue anymore, I mean, that's.
Is is this county-wide or is it isolated to kinda like the Sweetwater Hodges Canyon type areas?
Those areas, yeah, but but the, well, yeah.
Okay.
But occasionally, you know, here that it's in, it's usually within the municipalities or or in the unincorporated counties like Sweetwater Hillside there between, yeah.
Like the recreational areas.
And we're just talking about the ones that modified them to be louder.
Yeah, and there's, and anymore, and if you buy one, that they're, they're pretty loud, I mean, they
Yeah.
as long as we don't mess with diesel trucks and.
Okay. All right, uh, we already did definitions, exemptions, uh, we did, we add in one for agricultural activity and um, government activities. And Mitch just did.
My kid, yep. Keep him, keep him off the road.
But.
I can't believe you allowed that.
There's some fights that aren't worth fighting.
That agricultural, though. Just the court that we had here in the last little while. I went out three weeks ago and started my semi that has a cow trailer on it, cause I had to be into it and load cows at eight in the morning, I went out at five and started it and let it idle to build the air so you could release the brakes. And that's what this, that court, a lot of that court was over with, over, was some of that. And that has to happen, that has to happen, um, even if it's just an idling truck.
Legitimate agricultural activity.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that that, we gotta have that in there.
You're going to get.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, I mean, that's, you're in the incorporated city, so
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know, I don't know their lake town is incorporated, the county ordinance, which we didn't have, or they got their own, or they don't have one at all.
I don't know.
Maybe you should talk to your mayor. Do you have an in with the mayor? Maybe you can get some little skid grease there.
Well, I think what we're trying to capture on this is when we have issues with parties that have loud music.
Yeah.
Particularly, um.
Overnight rental, when they put a speaker out, and they're not going to bed.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's, and that's an issue, you know, and and without an ordinance, it's a matter of, hey, go quiet down. But if there's an ordinance, then law enforcement have the ability to say, you know, quiet it down, it's after ten o'clock and or the next time we come back, you will be cited, they've got something to to go by. And and, you know, these, and they're, and most of it takes place within the, within the city limits, but you've got these razors who are up and down the streets and, you know, and at seven, or at ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, they're revolved.
Or the exposed beaches for that matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is right in front of people's houses.
Anyway, I I think that's what we're trying to catch here, and I think this, this pretty much does it, I, we don't wanna tie the hands of the agricultural community cause that's where we live, I mean, it's, regardless of you got a really nice home in Garden City or not, it's, it's rural, it's a rural county, so.
Well, having an ordinance that also exempts agriculture helps as well, because people who can complain, you know, we have something we can point to say, they're they're practiced, you know, they're well within their rights to be making that noise. You know, and it, and it helps people feel like it's resolved, even if it's not in the direction they want.
Right, it's pointed to.
Yeah.
And it's funny, people move up here for the agricultural, the agrarian lifestyle, they like the open space, but they don't like the things that come along with it. Whether it's baling hay at one o'clock in the morning, or a calf giving, or a cow giving birth.
Yeah.
It's a pick and choose.
Yeah.
Her uh, her cows on the highway to slow you down.
It works when it works for you.
You know, kinda like the jackhammer in the bathroom too.
What are they doing?
Tile, taking the little tiles.
Tile? Jeez. Surely it's gotta have a hole in it by now, whatever they're trying to break through.
You even think maybe you're going out the back door?
And then penalty, um. Here, um, we declare it as a, as a nuisance, so that makes it easier to abate if it's ongoing
First degree.
and civil action. And then B, if you intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly violate this, you're guilty of an infraction, which is the same as like a no seatbelt or spitting on the sidewalk. But then C, any person intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly violating this ordinance, after having been either cited or warned by law enforcement is guilty of a class B. So, you're kind of a, a soft touch up front, and then if they won't abate then it's uh, I mean.
Does your law enforcement indicate that they have multiple infractors? Or are they pretty, are people pretty good about quieting down once they've been talked to?
Depends.
Well, both, but but they, they feel like they need, the thing of it is, if they can port it to an ordinance, then they've got the ability to, when they go back the second time, that
Doesn't go both ways.
it's not, you know. I mean, right now, it's a matter of, you know, your neighbors will complain, you're really loud, it's one o'clock in the morning, you need to you know, you need to qu- quiet down and don't mean to come back again, or when you come back again, it was an issue of, well, I'm warning you.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
They have an order.
Right.
So, um, I mean, overall, you know, I I, we've gotta give them a tool.
Sure.
And I think this is a good start, you know, I really do. Um I think it's a good enough start to get, let's put it on for a public hearing, where we should've done this in January instead of now, but at least, um, we're working towards that, so.
Yeah. I'll have it noticed up next month. Any other questions or changes? Do you wanna, for now, avoid the route with the decimal meter?
Yeah, that's the last thing we need is, it's just, that's, that that just complicates things.
Seems just. You'd have to send, you'd have to send a runner back to the station through the decimal meter.
Yeah.
Run it back.
And then creep up on them until they get hit the right threshold.
Well, the other issue about that is, is is, you know, they're gonna pull up and they're gonna turn it down, and they're not gonna be able to you know, they're, you know, they, if it's not high enough on the decimal meter, they're measuring the complaint by the decimal meter, and if they pull up and they turn it down, it's kinda like, well, I guess it's not that noisy, because I can't, I can't show you that it's past our our noise ordinance where if we, if we don't put a decimal meter, and they can go in and say you're loud, and there is a disargument of, you know, it's kinda like speeding, you know, under their radar, I mean, that's, that's very defined, and if you're, you know, sixty-nine and it's a, and a seventy mile an hour or maybe, you know, I mean, it's, I just don't, I don't wanna pin them down to a decimal, I don't think that's good. It's too hard for them, really.
I agree. Alright, well that's all my business for today. So I'll get you that ordinance, march for it, to come sign it, and then next month we'll have that public hearing.
Okay.
And then you'll be knowing that ordinance we got today, once it's enacted. So, alright.
And, Shantel, you'll have to let Ann leave some of it to watch for that.
That's it.
Thanks, guys, thank you, thanks for coming up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Commissioner, same to you.
Thank you. Hey, we got you out of here right about long.
Yeah, worked out good, thank you, appreciate it.
See ya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will that journey for a few minutes or not?
Um, well, we're, we're gonna be on schedule, there was something we was gonna talk to, or turning about, what was it?
Oh, uh, the sponsorship.
Oh, yeah. Better grabbing.
Do you have it?
How you doing, Tom?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
I uh, I'm gonna go to my brother in town sometime, next month or two, I understand it's busy, so I don't wanna be too needy or I'd just like to give a warm introduction and say that I would help them from this perspective and yours.
You gonna be around with Stephen?
I live around the Fox elevator. The day that you guys have permission meeting maybe too, so I leave here and some days I've had no time, and some days I've had about an hour or so before I need to be in ready for theirs. And I can begin theirs with an R D A meeting, I need to do that, so.
Okay.
Not today, but I'm happy to come up any time.
Well, I did, they uh.
And I don't know where, yesterday was the fourth, if their meeting, they always meet the first Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
In the evening. Yes, that's, that's seven.
Okay. Um. They, they like you guys, they only meet once a month? Any chance it would be a little less formal then, just be the three of us, different time?
Yeah. Should be a hole in the ground in there somewhere.
Yeah, they, I've got it all the time, so. I don't know if this is politically correct to say anymore, but I think that we have to attend to that.
Oh, dear.
Supposed to use some really great uh ground or cement on these guys.
They're firm a long time ago.
I keep standing up for saying I don't do it, so.
Good, I mean.
Good. Y'all, I'm good.
Hey, you headed?
How about it? I, I don't know, I'm just about to look at your, I don't remember much of that.
Oh, you're. Yeah, you should've come over yesterday, that's, we have quite a celebration up in Woodruff Parade and.
Yeah.
Little rodeo. They do a good job.
Damn it, I should've. I'll need to remember that for next time.
Did you come over to Raspberry Days?
Um, I try to avoid large crowds, particularly if it's large crowds of tourists and not large crowds of people that live wherever that large crowd is. It doesn't mean that I wouldn't, I have before, but I'd rather come up like when it's not the weekend, you know, and enjoy it when it's a little bit of a mellow. I'll tell you what, a ton of joggers this morning on the road on my way up here.
Yeah, those trails over there get used and.
Yeah, you you guys definitely have something successful with that trail network. All different body shapes and ages.
Yeah.
Like it's.
Bikers.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, Commissioner, I've got a, got a few things with the short week that I feel like we need to get on, and need to do a letter of recognition. I don't know of anything on your agenda that would probably be in purview. If it's all the same to you, I think I'm gonna head down to the Bragg office, get a few emails and calls taken care of before I gotta get to the Fox elevator. Are you good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd love to arrange a time, whether you want it formal or casual, that I can really sit down with each of you individually, or two, or three at a time, whatever works, just but it doesn't have to be formal, just to get some direction, now that I have a decent feeling. And know what your top priorities would be for economic development. Um, I'd mentioned back in April to Mitch, that I think a comprehensive, like, economic development plan that would include stakeholder groups that give kind of a, my my prediction, you'll have a lake, and you'll have everything else, so to speak, um, with very different views on what economic development is, and what they'd like it to be, but I'd like to be able to formalize that, so, I think he may even be prepared if he hasn't mentioned something to you already about that, but I'd like to just get some direction from you, if that's alright, just casual conversations, start to put together some, some direction. About work, if I reach out to you just one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, and then y'all enjoy the rest of the day, it looks beautiful out here.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's fifty-three, I was listening to the Eagles with my windows down, about three thirty, fifty-three degrees, it's a little brisk. Well, I mean, at that speed, it was a little brisk.
Yeah.
See y'all.
Come again, Tom.
Oh, dude.
Are we off or um? I'm. We'll call commission meeting back to order. And turn the time on, over to Kaya, if you wanna tell us who you are and what your
So, um.
what your office is.
Um, I am about in, I am the county reporter, and I am here on behalf of Curtis Rex. He owns a cabin, uh um Otter Creek area, township living north, range five east. And he has a cabin up there that needs to be addressed, um, but the roads leading up to the cabin are not uh they don't have a name within my system, they're just labeled as access roads. So I am just wondering what I need to do to get those named, so that I can give this cabin an address.
So that road that goes up there isn't called North Otter Creek Road?
So it's actually, it branches off of Nebiker Road, but Nebiker ends before the cabin, and the roads that would coincide with this property is just labeled as A R thirty-eight and A R one twenty-one. So I was just wondering what you guys wanted to do as far as just make those A Rs official road names, or?
What does A R stand for?
Access road.
Access.
Hello.
So, what, what road did you just talk about?
North Otter Creek, North Fork Otter Creek.
So where is that in relation to his property?
That's the road you take to get up there.
Okay, and and what, what A R do we have, we have that as A R what?
Well, I have that one named, um, I have to step into my Otter's ear.
So it, it says North Otter Creek?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then it branches up there?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And it kinda drops south, and I have a, a printout.
Yeah, it branches off and instead of going, keep going west, his, you have to turn off and
Mm-hmm.
And now there is a two-track over to his place.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the issue about that is, is it on his private land, the road is?
Yeah, well, that was kinda part two of my question, so, this road right here, that kinda goes south, this is A R thirty-eight, and then this is A R one twenty-one.
Okay.
And I didn't know if I needed to make this its own kinda lane.
This is, this is his?
And this is his cabin, yeah, so this is his access point here.
Where does his property start?
On the section line here.
What is Jesse Sumption's address?
That I don't know, I didn't have any in that area.
Otter Creek. Otter Creek Road.
North Otter Creek or Otter Creek? Hi.
Probably north. Cause if you want me to just branch, well, I think, so this road, when it comes north up into here, is Nebiker Spring.
Yep.
So I didn't know if you guys just wanted me to kinda take Nebiker Spring and drop it down like length in the road almost?
But if somebody was to punch it in, you wanna going up North Otter Creek, not. You want them going up North Otter Creek? Not of course, I guess it would anyway.
Mm-hmm.
I guess it would anyway. But you wouldn't want them over in Nebiker Spring.
Well, that's just it. I mean, we don't this 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 road here obviously needs to be have its own name. Because if you don't, you're gonna be talking, you know, a a an address on on one of these other roads which is not gonna take you to there.
Right.
And that's what I figured, so I.
Does he have a preference for a name?
He wants to name it Legacy Loop.
Okay. This is BLM, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We could certainly name it Legacy Loop right there.
Mm-hmm.
On his own property. I don't know whether BLM would have an issue with us giving us a name on the count on and put it on our county map.
So do I need to get in contact with them or?
I think I would call I think I would call Brandon Neff and say that and kind of explain to him what that is and see if BLM has any input of.
He should know right where that cabin is too.
Yeah, and ask him where they fork down here. So this is Nebiker Spring here?
No.
Nebiker Spring ends up in here and then that's when it turns into AR thirty-eight.
Oh, clear down here. Okay. AR what's this one?
Yeah. And this is AR one twenty-one.
Okay, so do they have and is this which one's Otter Creek?
It's not showing there, is it?
No, I don't have it blown out enough. I'm sorry. Otter Creek is up in here though.
Yeah, it's it's about there.
Okay. I would I would call him and cause the thing of it is is we don't wanna put a name to it and then have the BLM. BLM has to agree basically on their property if we're gonna put a road or we're gonna name a road on their property.
Okay.
On on these, we we do not claim this. This is this is not a a county road.
No.
Okay. And that's what I thought.
So it's a private it's a private road.
And and you'll wanna s- point that out to them that we're not making a road there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, it and it's not a county road that our AR roads are already in our system GIS with AR numbers.
Mm-hmm.
This is this is a road that exists.
Disregard that. Okay.
But it's a private road to this piece of property and that's something that you know, basically Rex's and and BLM needs to come up with a name. You'll give it the you know, the the uh coordinates up here, but that
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, where it's a private road, we don't we don't name private roads.
So they have.
So I guess my question would be then, I don't have to name the roads leading up to it then? They can just stay as access roads? I just have to give this private?
So I do. Yeah, so there's Nebiker Spring. It's that way. Which right here. Family Lodge.
Okay, please. I think that's where my confusion was. Uh.
Which so. Yeah, no, I don't think you do. I don't think you do at all.
Okay.
See Bill.
Is that it?
Come go back out there and you can see that Otter Creek Road is down here and then that lodge is right there.
Yeah, okay.
I have it spelt on Google Maps. And they have four five star ratings.
Okay, so I just need to get in contact with
Brandon Neff.
Brandon Neff. Can borrow your pen?
He will he will uh and I would do this. I would send him an email to that address with a um a a map detailing what you know, uh the best you can detailing and maybe maybe and you might wanna even follow up. Let me just here. That's his cell phone number. So you might wanna follow up with his cell.
Even even s- call him and tell him you're s- send another something too maybe.
Okay. Okay, I will get in contact with him and then we won't worry about naming those access roads and hopefully we will be good to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't know that we're yeah.
Well, wh- what's the reasoning for one that named?
Um, probably, well depends, you know, any
M M M S and and a lot.
a a any any utilities. Well, I can tell you he's probably trying to get some insurance.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, and and
And they wouldn't accept coordinates.
Yeah, all insurance companies want and have su- at actual addresses. He's probably trying to get fire insurance and I don't think he's probably
Yeah.
and and anytime you do a loan anymore, they require you to carry insurance. Insurance requires you to carry an mortgage.
Probably trying to get Amazon two-day delivery there. Hmm.
All right, is there anything else you think of that I need to do with this or just follow up?
I'll just follow through on that and see what it come up with.
Perfect. Great.
Um, give us a call if we need a little more or Brandon needs a little more information, but
Okay.
I think I would I would give him a call and then I would email him. And so give him a
Okay. Perfect. Awesome. Thanks, Case.
Okay.
Thanks, Kaya. Commissioner Cox.
Thanks for talking to me with my mouth full.
Did you did you um did you look at these, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna do that.
I'll make a motion that we accept these uh exemptions as presented by our uh assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's moved second that we approve the exemptions as presented by the assessor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Perfect.
Okay, um, so our GOV OS contract, um we kinda went through that and had some discussion about that. And we were not going to renew Granicus. Um, there may be an issue with the payment on Granicus. But I would suggest that we go ahead and um go with GOV OS for at least a year and and see how things turn out and see if we can improve um our coverage with our nightly rentals as far as those that are not paying or those who are just totally under the radar or are not interested in being in it. So I'd make a motion to resign the GOV OS contract.
Okay, I'll second that motion that we go with GOV OS.
Okay, got a motion that we change and go to GOV OS for the coming year. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries unanimously.
All right, um as we had a discussion in our last meeting um about our county engineer contract, um so um our present engineer we've had for eight years and has has done us a good job. Um, but I do feel like that maybe we ought to, cause when we when we hired um when we hired them, um there was five or six other firms that was interested in it. And uh we we did go ahead and go with with them. And I don't remember, what was the name of the original?
Cook Sanders Associates.
Cook's Cook Sanders. And then um I don't know, a year or two after, maybe even a little more than that, after then they kind of dissolved into two different engineering firms and and uh we've been with the with Brent firm, with Brent's firm.
Crest.
Crest. We've been with Crest on this last go around. Um
Ever since I've been in.
Yeah, so I I feel like we oughta extend it out and and um we have we have some individual, I mean, we have some firms that are, we have one firm who is actually located in office right here in our county and we have another firm who has been familiar with our county and done some work for us as well as uh another firm that's located. And I I really feel like that we we oughta just do an RFP, simple RFP and and send out and have them all just give a proposal of what they would do our work for and of you know, a detailed issue of how much an hour and how much for plot review and how much for, you know, onsite stuff and and those kinda things. Not a not a real extensive RFP, just something that that we send out and and um you know, if we, you know, our present contractor uh comes back with the best proposal, fine, that's fine. But I think we really ought to those around us to go ahead and and put it out uh for an RFP and and see where we go from there. That's my recommendation.
Well, I like your recommendation. I think it's always good to be uh sting you with taxpayer money, you know, and look around, but also find people that are invested in the community, so. Um do you need me to make a motion, Bill?
Yeah, either you or I.
I can make a motion that we put an RFP, uh a request for proposal for county engineer services for the county and try to get several companies and or engineers to those proposals.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, moving second that we RFP out for our county engineer. Um, I suppose we that will be looked at at our next commission meeting.
We'll try and get that RFP out within the next uh week or so. Um, just kinda some basic information that we'd like to um to have them look at, kind of a list of things and and hopefully we can get some proposals back maybe before next commission meeting. Uh maybe if we got them back, um that's why it's just gonna fly, but
Yep.
um maybe if we could get them back by the twenty, if we could get them out and get them back by the twenty-sixth, that would give us a couple of days to review them before our next commission meeting, um which will be the second of August. Um, so if we could get those RFPs out, notifications out by the tenth, that would give them two full weeks to uh come up with something. And I I don't, they don't need to be real complicated about every little teeny detail of what what they do, but they oughta have a basic rate structure as the the normal things that the engineers are doing such as plot reviews and site reviews and and some of it's a little more detailed, but you know, their rate per hour should cover the majority of that, so.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Perfect.
All right, I will I will get with Annalisa and we'll see if we can um come up with a a pretty basic framework for an RFP and get it out to, we'll there's there's a pretty good list and we'll get it out to those engineering firms that have done business here in our county or doing business in our county, so. All right. I think that takes care of my line item.
Okay.
Um
Expenditures.
I reviewed them. Um I do have a couple of questions on a couple, but uh we'll have to circle back around, so um the re- the ones that I reviewed uh looked fine. One of the things I guess we need to become more what should I say, more diligent in the process is is Christie really wants us to approve those expenditures um online, um and get on and and actually approve them so that she can get them, so she doesn't have to wait till the next commission meeting. So we need to probably refine that process a little more and look for those emails and and uh if we don't approve them, then you know, we either let need to let her know or we need to make sure that those are not those not those do not go through the process until we have a chance to review and approve, so. I would make a motion to approve the expenditures that's in our uh been presented to us for the month of of June.
Yep, I'll second that motion.
All right. Got a motion to approve our expenditures for June. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Our next thing is at two o'clock.
Oh man, we get a little break?
Yeah, for a minute. Um, I would move we we take a break for twenty minutes and um get a drink and and saunter. I think we need to saunter.
Yeah. Give me a saunter.
Okay, we'll take a break until and reconvene at two o'clock.
Which will be an executive session, so.